How are you, sir?
Evening.
Good evening. You ready? I call to order the meeting, the planning commission for the city of Wilsonville on Wednesday, November 14, 2018. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Chair Greenfield.
Here.
Vice Chair Posma.
Here.
Ron Heberlein.
Here.
Peter Hurley.
Here.
Cameron Mesba.
Here.
Phyllis Mellon.
Here.
Simon Springall.
Here.
Thank you.
Please rise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This is a time at the beginning of our meeting that we set aside for citizens to have the opportunity to address the planning commission regarding any item that is not already scheduled for a formal public hearing tonight, and we do have a public hearing later on. Therefore, if any member of the audience would like to speak about any work session item or any other item of concern, please raise your hand so that we may hear from you now. Very good, we'll move on. The minutes for the October 10th meeting have been distributed. Are there any corrections or amendations or additions to be made? Hearing none, the minutes are approved as distributed. Our agenda tonight has two major items. The first is a legislative hearing on the Boones Ferry Park master plan, which will occupy us for approximately an hour and a half. That will begin with the presentation by the, uh, by the staff, and the hearing will follow. As required, I will read into the record the legislative hearing procedure. Matters before the planning commission involve legislative public hearings. These are somewhat different from the quasi judicial hearings conducted by the city's development review board. The planning commission would like to hear from anyone who has testimony to offer that is relevant to the issues before the planning commission. If you wish to testify tonight, please fill out one of the cards on the table and make sure that it is given to a member of the staff. I think directly to our clerk would be appropriate. Before your testimony gives you, uh, because your testimony gives you legal standing in the matter for which you are testifying, it is important that you provide your full name and address on the testimony card or at the beginning of your comments. When you testify, please address your comments to the criteria that will be reviewed by the city staff at the start of the hearing. Some of the issues that come before the planning commission are fairly complicated, and that certainly would be true of tonight's. For that reason, we especially appreciate any specific recommendations or suggestions you may have. We will ask you to avoid redundant testimony. If you agree with testimony that has already been given, just tell us that. If we have a large number of people interested in testifying, we may limit the time allotted to each. I don't see that as a probability tonight. When you come to the microphone, please state your name and your address, or if you prefer not to state your address aloud in the public forum, state that your address is as provided on the testimony card you submitted for the record, and please speak directly into the microphone. At the end of your testimony, members of the commission may have questions for you, and you will have opportunities as well to hear from the, uh, staff and consultants who are participating in this issue. Thank you for taking the time to come here tonight and help us to deal with these issues. With that, we'll move on. I call on Mr. McCarty to present for the city. Is he here?
He is. Mr. McCarty and Mr. Brian Stevenson will come to the dais. I'll just kick this off quickly. Chair Greenfield, members of the commission, Chris Namsoo, the city's planning director. Just by way of background, this hearing was opened at a planning commission meeting on Oct- on August 8th of this summer, and the planning commission continued that to an October, uh, date certain of October 10th, and that unfortunately was not, uh, we were not able to get together for that public hearing. We continued it one more time to tonight. However, the fact that we have citizens here, uh, to me speaks to the fact that we have successfully communicated the skipping rock on this public hearing, and, uh, I've got the folks here who are interested and are here to participate. So, uh, we're pleased to be able to introduce to you the Boones Ferry Park master plan. And with no further ado, I'm going to hand the stage over to Mike and to Brian to take you through the presentation.
Chris, before we start, we have no monitors here at the moment unless anybody else has something.
Nope. Did not know, are they're all dead? Yep, thank you for that.
They're on, so give us one second if you can.
Thank you.
Cause there's the, mine has a power light, so does yours.
There is. The alternative is turning around like you're in the front row of the movie theater.
Yeah, and then everybody can look at the backs of our heads, that'd be great. Thank you, Paul.
Yes, and her postman, yes, thank you, Mike.
Thanks, Chris. Um, as Chris stated, um, this has been delayed a few times. Um, we tried to hammer out as, as best we could a really good plan with the consultant. Uh, we think we've gotten there. Uh, I know Mr. Greenfield was at a couple of the, um, public meetings we had, which I appreciate him coming, and he knew firsthand, at least we're making an effort to get out there. Basically, the plan tonight, I, I, part of this, you can read it, but I'll read it for the public, and then it's that, you know, we have a quarter of a mile riverfront. Uh, it's, it is unique. If you go out there, you really can't see the river much, and most of the public comment we got was access to the river, which didn't necessarily mean jumping into the river, but seeing it, uh, maybe kayaking in it, but just knowing it's there. So that's what we tried to do. Some of the things that, uh, we had in our first map, um, we had a geologist, hydrologist, other people come out there and realized we could not do some of those things, so those were taken off of that map. Maybe couldn't do it, but 99% at this time in our life, maybe 50 years from now, yes, but at this time, no. Uh, so it's more realistic. We think we've got a good plan. Hopefully you guys feel the same way. Um, and I don't know about you, but the whole, we had the whole citywide comprehensive plan and the Boones Ferry plan, and we got confused with dates sometimes, and maybe you guys got confused with the plan sometimes, but hopefully not now, cause the other one's already done and put to bed. Uh, but tonight, we have about 10 slides of, uh, of a PowerPoint that Brian has actually put together, and Brian will lead you through that, and we encourage questions, suggestions. This does not go back to the council if, um, this is approved tonight until December 17th, so we have time to make changes, uh, and that's, and that's why we put that out there so far. Um, so with that, I guess I'll just leave it to Brian, and then we'll just go from there. And, and thank you for having us for the, I don't know how many times, thank you.
Thanks, Mike. So, just to give you a lay of land tonight, we'll do a quick overview, uh, kind of let you know how we got here, recap, uh, our public involvement process, and then go ahead and, uh, look at the plan and highlight the, the things that might have changed since the last time we were here. So just so everyone knows where we're talking about, Boones Ferry Park, located at the end of Boones Ferry Road, uh, 15 acre parcel that includes the existing park, uh, parcels to the east and the west, and then a small chunk that runs north, um, that's currently a wooded area. This is a fun, colorful, starting point, everything that we had to work with, uh, from the good, the bad, and, uh, was sort of our jumping off point to, to where we were going to get to. As part of this process, we really prided ourselves on the amount of public outreach, uh, that we were able to do. Uh, we had three different public workshops. Uh, we also opened it up to some online comments, and we're able to receive 211 of those. Uh, we did outreach through the, the neighborhood, uh, Facebook events and a variety of, of features, uh, just to be sure that not only the, the neighborhood was aware of what was going on, but also the, the general community, so they could give their feedback as well. What we wanted to do is make sure that the amenities in this park met the needs of the community, but also played true to the historic nature of the park, what the park was, uh, and what those in that neighborhood, uh, wanted the park to become. So while we were trying to create something that was important to the community as a whole, uh, we did our best to be sensitive to, uh, the neighborhood that surrounds the park. Uh, you can see the, the colorful grid up there. The first open house, we asked folks, what do you want to see in this park? And there were a lot of ideas, uh, but the biggest things, as Mike reiterated, was natural river access. We also wanted to keep natural areas natural. The neighbors and those involved in the process wanted to minimize some of the development of wooded areas, uh, and then as you move down, some more active type of things, basketball, fishing, uh, you know, trails along the river, bike access. And we're pretty excited because as you look at the, the grid there in front of you, the items that five groups or the majority of folks wanted, we were able to integrate those into the plan. And even those that only a handful of folks wanted, we were able to integrate those into the plan, so we really felt like we were able to meet the needs and the desires of those that were involved in this process and got into the plan what folks were looking for. So we took all that information, developed three conceptual plans, all varying, uh, from super activated, basically touching every inch of that park, seeing what we could squeeze in there as fu- as far as fun, active elements, um, some that integrated the river a little bit more. We put those out to the community, got their input, got down to one refined plan, and that got us to the plan where we're at today. So what you have in front of you, uh, is our final draft plan that we are presenting this evening. It does not look a whole lot different than the plan you previously saw. Uh, but what I will point out and just highlight a few of the amenities in this, uh, particular plan, is you see down here is a dock into the river, and that dock is going to have access for non-motorized watercraft, canoes, kayaks, stand-up paddle boarding. Also going to integrate into the park some rental opportunities for those, those same elements, and that's what you see, uh, here as a rental for residents or visitors of the park, uh, for canoes, kayaks. Connecting with the river was important, and as Mike mentioned, not just being in the river, but seeing it, so you'll see a number of river overlooks. There's going to be one here, another here, and another at this end of the park, all giving folks varying levels of views to the river and a way to connect with it. Trails and preserving the wooded areas was something we heard over and over, so you'll see that this north area of the park, which is wooded at this point, is going to stay wooded with very minimal development there. Uh, there will be a paved, looped walking trail that circles through it, but other than that, no further development is there. Uh, this is the existing wastewater treatment plant building that you see there. A dog park, uh, that's really the biggest, newest element that's gonna take place in this park. Uh, so you'll see a dog park here, and then a bike skills course, which is just a, a dirt track that'll allow, uh, younger bike riders or older bike riders, for that matter too, uh, to do a little bit of off-road riding, uh, through a dirt, dirt area, um, in this region that you see here where the cursor is. The plan also calls for an update to the Taufman House. Uh, the plan, uh, is in line with the, uh, facilities master plan, which called for updating the Taufman House, updating the upstairs of the Taufman House into a, a bridal or event venue. Uh, and then this plan also has added, uh, an outdoor plaza space right here, which will further, uh, the ability to, to host outdoor events, whether you want to have your reception or dance floor out there. And then I would also point out that the basketball court, I know that was one of the things we discussed the last time, uh, we were here, we did make the decision actually to tuck it even closer to the Taufman House for a couple reasons. One, uh, if folks are going to rent the Taufman House, we would be able to include that as part of the rental, and that could double as the event space, uh, for the Taufman House, so we can include, uh, just another flat area where they can expand their, their rental venue. This area down here will be a playground. Uh, that playground's gonna be a natural playground, a mix of some more traditional elements, but, but weave in and out of the trees, um, and give folks just a, a real element, uh, and I'll show you a picture here in a second that gives them an overlook into the river. Connections to existing and planned trails. We've got the Boones Ferry to Memorial Trails connection that's coming right through here on this side. Uh, within the next year, we'll be starting construction on this portion of the trail that comes down into the park, and it'll come along the bank here. The park also, uh, as you see here, has the French Prairie Bridge and the landing of the bridge, so future connections, uh, to trail systems there, and also, as we head north, connection to the Ice Age Tonkin Trail. Other support elements that you'll find within this plan, additional parking, uh, this is the existing parking area, we've added a number of other spaces here, additional parking here, and parking to service the dog park in the bicycle area. As this screens up, I'm just going to point out the major changes from, from the last time that we were here, uh, biggest being this parking area and this parking area. On a previous, uh, iteration that you saw, those were on-street parking, uh, we've now pulled those off-street, uh, with just a, a small, uh, separation there, similar to what you see at Town Center Park. The other major component that is no longer on the plan is there was a second dock right here, an ADA accessible trail that came down here. As Mike mentioned, we did some preliminary, uh, outreach to some folks that looked at that and said there was just no way, uh, that we were going to be able to do that. What we can do, this area over here, um, we met with some folks, and they're very confident that that area will become the ADA accessible access down there, um, what those switchbacks look like, but, uh, they were out able to measure and had no doubt that that area, uh, near the existing, uh, ferry landing would be sufficient for ADA access. What we did replace, as opposed to any ADA accessible trail, what you have here is a soft-surface seasonal trail, so likely in the wintertime, that is going to flood out. Summertime, you will have trail access here, and then this will be a soft-surface trail, uh, that comes up. So that was the best way that, that we could continue a, a looped access, uh, but still get folks down onto the river. It will be not as a formalized trail as you might expect, but, you know, something that's walkable for folks, uh, in the summertime when the water level's low. This is just a, a side view of, of what we were just talking about. The thing I would want to point out to this is if you look at this picture from the way that land stands today, you're going to see, say there's no way we can put that walkway where that walkway is, you're absolutely right. What this is illustrating, though, is that walkway will be there. The reality is there might be plantings that go up the hill a little bit, so it will still give you the same fill, feel, um, but by no means are we suggesting we're going to put that walkway halfway down a steep cliff. So, um, this is more to show you that as those various elements are, are laid out, this is how it's going to look. Uh, in that image in the lower right-hand corner is a similar, you know, sort of treehouse feel that we would want for the, the playground, just to, to give kids that upper, upper view of the river. Now the fun part. How do we get it done? So, this project has been divided into five phases. Uh, phase one being those elements tied to the river, and the reason there, that's what we heard from the community, is that the number one desired addition to this park. So, we wanted to be sure that was in phase one. The one thing I do want to point out on these cost estimates, because there are a lot of unknowns, uh, with a number of the elements in this park, this $10 million that you see is a ballpark. Um, as you saw in the, the staff report, we're probably in the, the eight to $13 million range, uh, as far as what this could result in, uh, but we'll talk about on the next slide kind of what those next steps are and how we're going to drill down on some of those numbers. But this gives you an idea of what this phasing could look like. Would also point out that as part of this phasing plan, uh, as we get more information, uh, certain elements might have to be adjusted into other phases in order to be more efficient, uh, and also find some cost savings when we're, we're looking how to construct this. So next steps. It's very fun infographic, it kind of reads like a choose-your-own-adventure book from the 1980s, early 90s, uh, but the short version is, we have more studies to do. We're going to do a land survey, we're going to do some more geotechnical work, we need to do some hydrology work as well, uh, to be sure that where we want to put that dock will be sufficient. We have met with folks that build docks, and they don't have any doubt that we can build a dock, it'll just be a, a question of, of what building that dock in that location will cost. So we're going to do some more homework. If there's any adjustment, uh, we would refine at that time, and then we'd be ready for phase one development. Once we get through phase one, come back, look at what's in phase two, and be ready to go again. So, um, I guess the shortest version of this is we know there's still some homework to do, uh, but know that this plan in front of you is more that bigger picture, and these are the elements that are going to the park, and how we get to there, and some of those more technical things are, are still up in the air. So, uh, with that, we would open it up to any questions. Uh, these pictures that you see here are examples of a number of the elements that we are looking at for potential in this park. So with that, I would open it up to you.
Well, I'll go first. Do you have, um, a, a tentative of time schedule for these phases?
Go ahead.
Wow, I guess with anything in the city, um, with the comprehensive master plan, the entire city master plan, and Memorial Park master plan, and now this master plan, I think our next job may be with this crew here, and also with city council and staff, of course, is to prioritize what is top next, whatever, from Memorial to citywide to Boones Ferry. So timeframe is hard to pinpoint, and when you're talking, you know, $10 million here, and another $10 million or so at Memorial Park, and whatever else is on the rest of the community, you're talking maybe 25, 30 million dollars, it's really hard to tell you right now what is the next step. I mean, like Brian said, the trail is scheduled for next year, the one trail he pointed out there in, in Boones Ferry, um, but to pinpoint the next even three years is really difficult, but that is, that's the next thing we need to do, is prioritize. In the, uh, cost projection, how is, uh, cost of living reflected in it, or is it?
I don't believe it is. Those, those numbers are what it would cost if we were to build it today. So, with any of our capital projects, as they get pushed out, we would be looking to adjust those numbers accordingly.
So, so all of those plans I just told you about, we probably need to put an escalator in as far as what is the estimate, as far as 5%, 3%, 2%? What, what is the escalator for the next 10 years, 15 years? What, what is that going to cost? So that's another thing we would probably need to do. Of course. Who wants to go first?
I'll ask. I'm a little bit curious on the cost estimates, I got two big questions for you, the cost estimates. You know, phase one, we're talking about building a dock and clearing some stuff, and a lot of work by the river. Phase two is a completely undeveloped area, but then all of a sudden, phase three, which is, which is really the area where we already kind of have some stuff, it's almost twice as expensive as the other stuff, and what's, what's driving that cost on phase three that's making it significantly more expensive than, I guess, I, I guess my initial thought would be a completely undeveloped area and something right along the river would be more expensive, but that just may be my ignorance there, what's, what's driving that?
One large element of, of phase three is the Taufman House. Uh, so the construction to renovate the Taufman House, uh, is a large piece of that, and that's why you see phase three significantly higher than anything else. If you pull that Taufman House number in, it's going to, out, it'll be more in line with some of the other cost perspectives.
So, so we're really just expecting that, that the Taufman House renovation is, is somewhere in the neighborhood of a million or more on its own, or?
Correct.
Guess I'm curious why that is, but, um, let me ask my second question, and that is, is that, I, I mean, I mean, we, we've been talking for some time that a big part of this park plan here is, is that, um, you know, that access to the river and, I, you know, hydrology and, you know, and, and all that stuff is, is what it is, right? Um, I guess I'm a little bit curious, though, is, is that, um, it, maybe we can't do some of those things, but are we meeting it with this plan? I mean, um, I, I noticed that, for instance, we have a pathway up towards the top, but it's really offset quite a ways away from what I would expect, and maybe I'm wrong with this, but what I would expect where the ridge is, right? So, um, would we maybe be better served kind of getting some of those walkways closer to that edge so that we can at least get some sitting areas, and, you know, you're walking by the edge? Um, I, I guess I'm just wondering if, if hydrology says we can't do some of those things along the water's edge like we want, can we push some other elements towards that, you know, that drop-off or, or visibility range a little bit more so, or?
No, I think that's a fair question, and it's kind of hard to pick up on, on this drawing, but to your point, that walkway that, that runs east-west, or however you want to describe that, along there is pushed as close to the bank as possible, or will be pushed as close to the bank as possible. So, your point is well-taken, but it, it is designed to be just as close to that edge as possible without having to go pick it up out of the river?
Okay, and then we, we have like tree clearing and stuff like that going on there in probably phase one, right? So at least you're gaining that visibility and you're as close as you can get, so.
Correct. All right, thank you.
Sure. I noticed a letter in our packet that talked about the Taufman House being, um, I think it was with the Historical Society, we're, we're very interested in it.
Correct.
So, uh, how is that going to be melded with what you're proposing, which sounds almost like a, sort of a wedding venue or a family reunion kind of venue? I'm, I'm not sure I understand how those two things can, can mesh together.
Well, they may not be able to, i- is the easiest answer. Um, we decided to hold true to the facilities master plan, which called to renovate that into an event space. Uh, that also fits with its current use, uh, through our department, as a wedding, birthday, memorial, event venue. Uh, and when we looked at the options as part of this plan, uh, we did look at what options could that house be used for, uh, keeping it as an event venue, uh, turning it into space that could be used by outside nonprofits or, or groups similar to the Historical Society, or, you know, turning, making that the, the water sport rental. Uh, analyzing all of that, we determined that the best use would be to keep it as an event venue, uh, allowing us to continue to, to bring in revenue for the city, and making it, uh, a place where community members and visitors would want to come and host their event. So, we did look at all options, but ultimately landed on the event venue for this particular piece.
The other, uh, thing, I, I, I'm glad to see the, uh, parking moved off-street. We just went over there and spent some time wandering around in the park, and I just did not see how not see how that was going to blend well with the neighborhood. It was certainly going to be an inconvenience to that area. Just one of the thoughts, though, that I had is I kind of tried to envision this dog park and then this bike path. It's kind of those two things close together. Is that, do you see any conflict in terms of, I don't know, it just seems, you know, you've got dogs running around and you've got people running around on bicycles and you've kind of got a little different kind of atmosphere, I guess, is, for lack of a better word?
Well, the dog parks will obviously be fenced, for one. I mean, all of those will be fenced, so that's a buffer at least, and you're supposed to take your dog to the dog park on a leash, so hopefully people will abide by those rules. Not to say that I do, but most people should, and then when you get to the dog park, it's fenced, so hopefully that's the buffer that we...
That'll be the buffer, yeah.
The other, I'm sorry, the other thing I would add, it's hard to tell on a flat map like this. There is quite a, there is a topography difference there from where the dog park would sit more on the flat ground down below.
All the way end of it?
Correct.
Yeah. All right, because, yeah, I was kind of looking at that area and thinking that's, but you're not thinking about removing any buffer of trees in that area really for this, or not, okay?
No, I mean, in that area, we would do our best to integrate whatever trees are there. The only trees at this point I could say that we would look to be removed is once we do any sort of studies, anything that was unhealthy or a danger, we would look to remove those. But at this point, this plan's not calling to remove anything.
Yeah, because I was there like on a, like it was Sunday afternoon or something, the noise level is quite, actually quite intense there from the freeway. I was surprised how loud it was, and there's still quite a bit of trees and leaves and things. The other thing, and certainly this came up with the, with Memorial Park and the being able to provide security for the park itself and for the neighborhood. Are there some thoughts in terms of that? Any ideas of how you're going to ensure that this is a safe location for people at night or conversely, you know, during the daytime?
Sure. No, I think that's an excellent question. We, I think it would follow a similar pattern of what we're working with our local police department now, just increasing patrols. There were discussions about gating this park and what that could look like, but when we really looked at where those gates could be and how that may impact the neighborhood and the access to public streets, we just, it really only minimized a couple parking lots, still allowed folks to get into the park on foot. So, we chose to not have gates there into the two parking areas. But to your point, I think it would just be the increase in patrol from police. Unless Mike has anything further.
No, but as Brian said, we've had a meeting with the police chief because of the Memorial Park incident lately, as far as increased police patrol, and they have made a pledge to do that. Also, during the months where they can get on their bikes, they'll be out there on their bikes, patrolling the various parks more often, and so that's kind of where we're at right now, is kind of collaborating with the police department to make sure that they're out there more often, and police chief is assured that's what they're going to do, so.
So, you have decided that gating of some sort is not very feasible in this area because of the private, I mean, because of the streets and...
It just didn't seem to work down there. I mean, we tried to look at three or four different gate places, but it just, it just didn't seem to work, so.
Okay.
Mr. Mesba?
Questions?
Mr. Hillman line?
Sure, I'll go for it. So, you talked about bringing the basketball court even closer to the plaza. Can you talk through the thought process of doing that?
Sure. So, thought process was twofold. One being that for, for events that are going to be outside, and now that we've created an event plaza outside, we understand that folks are going to be utilizing that space more and more. So, even if the basketball court stayed where it was at or moved slightly further, there was still going to be that noise from kids whoever playing basketball, regardless of where they are in the park. So, the thought process there was if we shift it closer to the event venue, we can then wrap that into the event rental itself and then allow those folks to utilize it as an extended space, essentially taking it out of use for the general public on those few events that we get down there that are going to rent that outside space. So, I guess the thought process there would be that in order to keep it an event venue on those certain days, the basketball court would be closer.
Okay, so for your thought process now, is that that basketball area would be part of the rental at all times? It wouldn't be a you could choose it or you could not choose it? Is it, it's just a, you get this entire area?
We've not fully thought through what the rental of it looked like, if you're paying an additional fee, or what that would look like. Our hope, because it is a amenity in a park, that we wouldn't want to monopolize it for renters that wouldn't be using that outside space. So, our hope is that the community members still utilize that basketball court as much as possible, but there could be those events where they could add that on to their rental and pay an additional fee, but we haven't thought through what that permitting process would look like.
Okay.
And a little bit ironic that you bring that up, that was one of our major consternations was move it or not move it, and the other part of moving it was to leave that number three phase, if you want to call it, as an open space where, you know, you can play catch, play frisbee. It's just an open green space to, there's no, nothing else going on to interact with that, and we thought that would be also an advantage for that space, because those are sought after and there's not many of those around.
Sure. Next question. What's the square footage for the Tauchman House? I don't think I know that. I guess really what I'm trying to figure out is, you know, you've got $711,000 for restoration of the main floor upstairs and basement, and that seems like a lot, and so I was just trying to understand what was, what was driving that estimate and what other options there might be, I mean, because that is a significant chunk of that phase three.
What I can tell you is that number was pulled from the facilities plan that was completed by the city's Public Works Department, and then, so, a number of, 2015? Does that sound right? 2015, that dollar amount was slightly less than 15. We raised it to today's value, so that's where that number came from. As part of this plan, we did not do any additional research on the renovations of the house.
Okay. Okay, thanks.
Mr. Springall?
Excuse me, I seem to recall there was something with the Tauchman House that we're not able to currently use the top floor because of safety concerns, and so presumably that we need to make some structural renovations to that, and that could be where that cost comes in.
That as well as egress, at this point, there's not appropriate egress to utilize the upstairs.
Right, okay. So, there's three, I think there's, apart from alongside the river, there's three really wooded areas that we're talking about. There's the northern wooded area, which I heard you say you're leaving pretty much all alone, and then there's the eastern area, yeah, close to the freeway, which I hope we're also leaving alone, right?
Correct, yep.
To provide that shielding. But we had testimony as well about the eastern area, the orchard and that kind of, that passive area that's in use, that's not really used right now, but apparently it's used for the neighborhood. Do we have any, apart from the parking lot there, does that parking lot impact the trees or is that pretty open in that particular area?
The parking area that you see will have minimal impact on those trees. We made a point as part of this plan to really just have the parking that comes off the road as well as the one-trail system, understanding that this park had to be compatible with and work together with the landing of the bridge. So, the parking area and what we have proposed is minimal in the way of any impact on those trees in that area that you see up there as five.
The bridge we're talking about, something that maybe 10 years down the road, we don't really know when that's going to be landing.
Sure.
So, there's no, there's no tree impact, there's no particular plan for either developing new trees or planting new trees or felling them in the east side, or the west side, rather, the park, or we're just leaving it, we're leaving all those, the mature trees in place?
That is the plan at this point, yes.
Okay, good. And the riverfront itself, that, those trees presumably have to be removed if we're going to grade down and provide visual access, right?
Well, the plan would be just some vista pruning. We're not looking to remove the trees along the bank, but rather thinning them out to increase those views. Our plan with this, where things are situated, would be to work with the existing trees. So, I guess the answer to your question is, nothing on here is explicitly calling for the removal of trees.
Okay, good. One more question then was about the Boones Ferry access, the old Boones Ferry access road, and is that, I haven't walked down it for a little while, but is it actually shallow enough for ADA access, or are you going to have to extend it somehow? How's that going to work?
In its current state, it is not ADA compliant. The plan would be, as you look at what you see here, approximately where number one is, would be where we would be looking or needing to integrate some switchbacks in order to meet that ADA compliance. So, the historical roadway that you see that exists now does not meet that, but in order to become compliant, we'd be looking at some switchbacks in that area.
Okay, and that will be pedestrian only, right? No motor vehicles down there?
Correct.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Mr. Hurley, you want the last word? All right, then, thank you.
Can I ask a supplemental question then? Tauchman House, since we've talked about it a couple times and it's adding quite a bit of expense, do we have any sort of projection on revenue?
In a word, no, but I also can't, I would argue that our current rental revenue would not be comparable to expanded and renovated revenue. So, even if I gave you what existing revenue was, it wouldn't be comparable to what we could do, given renovations.
Do we have any other comparables, either in our city or in the vicinity?
There are a number. I think if you look at the McLean House in West Lynn is another historical or older home that has been renovated, so we can definitely pull comparables to what a renovated small home like that would pull. I know McLean House does a number of events, including weddings.
Thank you.
Another quick question. I guess it's obviously in the future when you get started on section one, but the idea of if you're going to be hauling a kayak down that hill, I mean, there's, obviously there's ADA accessibility and the switchbacks for that, but that's not very conducive to, especially if you've got like a trailer type of thing for your kayak.
Sure. If you've looked at, there are almost conveyor belt type systems with rollers where you can get your canoe or kayak down without having to navigate, carrying it, or getting crazy with it on any switchback. So, we have looked at what options there would be to get your watercraft down to the water without having to carry it or navigate any switchbacks.
I've negotiated that with a kayak on my shoulder. It's not that bad. It's not that bad. No, you can do it. You can do it. Promise you, you can do it.
Okay, I don't want to cut anyone off, and actually, the commission will have a second shot here, but at this point, I would invite members of the public who wish to testify to submit the cards, the yellow cards to our clerk, and the clerk will give those to me, and I will call on people from those cards.
She's grabbing her notes.
Hello, thank you.
You are welcome. How are you?
I'm doing good. Doing good.
Is that it?
I got it. Okay. Hello, I'm Rose Case. I live at 9150 Southwest Fourth Street in Old Town. First residency we had when we moved here was right across the street from the park. The park was my kid's backyard, so we were in those apartments, so. And first of all, I would like to say that for, the park plan is a very good one. We're all pretty happy with it, but there are a few questions. And one of them that I have heard is the bridge and the orchard, that area. The orchard will go away with the bridge. It will be gone. There's no way you can put a bridge in there, especially if it's supposed to handle emergency vehicles. I used to drive a school bus, and I look at this, and the school bus is as big as a lot of those rigs, and some of them are bigger than a school bus, and I don't see how you can get that size of an emergency vehicle in that space and turn unless a lot of, that area is completely tore away, because they don't turn on a dime. They don't. You can't make them that large to turn that tight of a corner. The other thing that's going to happen down there is periodically, we get lost truckers. They're in the wrong part of town, and they come down Boones Ferry, and they get to the end, and there's the park, and I have watched them take out power lines, I've watched them take out posts, I have watched them take out, there's a group of, if I had a map, I could show you, but over here in the corner where the parking lot is, there's a little loop that comes out, that corner of Tauchman and Boones Ferry, they have ripped out branches from those trees. That is a fact, they come down there. So, that is something that needs to be considered to, for that area, and also if they're, not so much with the small sped buses, but some of the special needs buses are getting larger, and there's an apartment complex in there with kids, and if they have to send a bus in there to pick up that child, that, you really need to go and talk to the bus company and get their feedback on this. When Lowry was built, no one talked to the bus company about how you got the buses into the school and out, until they had already started building, and then suddenly they realized they couldn't get school buses in. So, this is something that needs to be done before, you know, that whole section is put in. The basketball court, I can see being a real issue. That's always been free, that's always been there, for everybody to come to whenever they want to, and I can see where he's coming from with events, because I've held family reunions there, and it's a great site, it's wonderful. But again, for the town people, Old Town and people come in from elsewhere to play basketball there, because it's not a well-known basketball place, so it's generally always open. You know, that will be an issue if somebody has rented something that's always free. So, that's another consideration I see. But it's little things like that. Otherwise, I think it's a great usage of the park and development of the park, but it's more of these nitty-gritty little things that if we work on them now and look into the future, it will make the planning much easier, and if the bridge does, I know everybody says it goes there, I just look at that area and it just boggles my mind how you're going to put a fire truck on there, and I say this because currently I've moved, so I can see the freeway, okay, over by the sewage treatment plant, and I can tell you, those big trucks go up and down the freeway trying to get through rush hour traffic at least two to three times a day. So, that's another issue with, you know, if we're going to use that in addition to bicycles for emergency vehicles, it's another thing that needs to be considered there, because you, I can just see that whole area being ripped to shreds, and the parking lot and the walkway and maybe even as far as to impact... and the walkway, and maybe even as far as to impact Tocman House parking, if it's not looked into now. And that's just my observance from living down there and watching the things happen. The trucks, fire trucks can go over the railroad tracks, and I have seen them do that, too. But they don't like to be, because you can meet a train. So, but otherwise, that's my two cents, and thank you very much.
Thank you. Appreciate your input. And I would note that we have a number of communications from the community which have already been included in the public record.
Hi there, Monica Keenan, 9460 Southwest 4th Street in Wilsonville. And I just have two, I think two comments regarding the park. One is, I know you discussed security and fencing, but for that Phase 4 area to the north, where parts of that park or that wooded trail that are going to be pretty isolated and not easily patrolled at night, if we could look at fencing that off along the areas where they back up to people's homes or into the immediate neighborhood, it'd be nice to address that and just kind of provide some sort of a buffer up there. If there's the opportunity for, as I know you've seen in written testimony, it's been discussed many times, traffic and parking is a big concern for the neighborhood. I know you've tried to address the parking and make it a little less impactful to the neighboring homes, but if we could also get some signage or something to remind people or address it as people are coming down to the park, to remind them that they are driving through a neighborhood, it's not a direct access, I mean, is a direct access, but they are driving through a neighborhood to get to a neighborhood park. And just to support some of the written comments you've received, Ann Rose's comments, that anything that can be done to preserve that orchard and that field, where it's expected to put the bike bridge, it would be preferred to really keep that green space in that historic field there. That's all I have. Other than that, I'm looking forward to having this park cleaned up. It's going to be wonderful. And to be able to see the river is a huge bonus. So, thanks.
Thank you. Does anyone else wish to address the commission? Thank you. Then I'll turn it back to the commission for any further questions or discussion before we entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
I just, I seem to recall when we talked about the Fifth Street extension, that there was some discussion about signage and limiting traffic going south of Fifth Street into Old Town. And I was wondering if that was part of, if that would mitigate the concern we've heard about trucks and other, you know, non-Old Town traffic somehow accidentally ending up down the bottom of Boones Ferry Road where the park is. It needs to be signposted at the, probably at the Fifth Street exit. I mean, we already have the sign for, you know, entering the neighborhood. I think the idea about having additional neighborhood sort of type signs would be useful throughout Old Town, but it doesn't necessarily belong at the park, you kind of, because you don't have a sign at the park saying you're in a neighborhood, because you've already gone through the neighborhood. So I think we need to think about that, you know, as you, throughout Old Town.
What I'm hearing is that that's independent of the park development plan. It really is a current need, and I assume that the city could take another look at that.
Yeah, yeah, thank you. That's right. It's not, this isn't really the park. Neither is the bridge, something that we're reviewing right now. And I think that's something that we, you know, the bridge isn't even a thing yet. It's very early days, I think, for the French Prairie Bridge.
As I see it, we're really looking at, it's not a concept plan. It is a master plan, but the details like this are somewhere down the road. Is the, are these phases of the development subject to a Development Review Board level?
Absolutely, yes, they are.
And at that level, I think these requirements could be discussed and put in place.
Absolutely.
Jerry Greenfield, you're correct on that, but obviously, you heard from the public, probably the simplest things, you know, sign, sign everywhere, sign. But do we, for the parks, do we have, is it part of our city code for dusk to dawn closure?
Yes.
Okay. So...
Yeah, the park hours specifically are in the city code.
Okay. And it's dusk to dawn?
Five to 10.
Oh.
5:00 AM, 10:00 PM.
Okay.
And that already applies to, say, Memorial Park.
So, I was thinking, when Ms. Keenan was referring to the wooded area, you know, basically posting it, that makes it a lot easier to do enforcement and/or, you know, keep good people good, and easier to identify the bad people being bad.
Correct.
And then for the basketball court, again, probably might take care of conflicts if another sign was placed that let people know that, you know, from time, that the basketball court can be rented or whatever, you know what I'm saying?
Sure. And that would hold true to some of our other similarities.
Exactly. I'm thinking of like, you know, the, here at Memorial Park with the structures, you know.
Exactly.
Thanks.
Anything else here? Then I will declare the public hearing closed, and we will move to our reflection and motion.
I move that we approve the Boones Ferry Park Master Plan and adoption of Resolution LP 18-0008.
Seconded. And moved and seconded. That we adopt the Boones Ferry Master Plan as presented. I'll call the roll on it. Mr. Hurley.
Aye.
Commissioner Herbertline.
Aye.
Commissioner Mizba.
Aye.
Commissioner Millen.
Aye.
Commissioner Posa.
Aye.
Commissioner Springall.
Yes.
And I vote yes. The motion to adopt carries. It will be forwarded on to City Council.
Thank you.
I suggest a five-minute recess, and we'll reconvene for the work session on Town Center. Is that okay? Okay, recess over. We move on to the second major item on the agenda, which is a work session on the Town Center Redevelopment Plan. Ms. Bateshall, will you present for the city?
Yes, thank you, Chair Greenfield, commissioners. My name is Miranda Bateshall, Planning Manager with the City of Wilsonville. And with me tonight, I have Alex Doopy from MIG, the consulting firm that's been helping us with this project, as well as Kim Rybold, Associate Planner with the City of Wilsonville. And as you know, we have been diligently working with you over a number of work sessions now. And we are back tonight to share with you and to talk with you about the implementation portion of the plan. We have started to talk about pieces of that with you over the last few months. We had a task force meeting last month. It was the final meeting of the project task force to discuss the implementation for the plan. We kind of gave you a highlight of that at your last meeting. It falls within a few different buckets, regulatory changes, projects in terms of infrastructure projects, and then some placemaking or economic development type programs. And so we want to actually talk with you a little bit more in depth about those this evening, and we'll walk through with you where we're at with that and what we heard from the task force, and would really like your input on what you think the city's priorities should be, the city's role in some of these things, and what you see is really catalytic to making the community's vision for Town Center a reality. So with that, I'm going to hand it over to Alex.
Well, thank you, and thanks for having us back in again to talk more with you about a Town Center Plan. And we have just two things on the agenda tonight, but they're pretty deep. We're going to dive into the implementation strategies quite a bit. During our last task force meeting, we went through an exercise where we looked at each of these major elements and then prioritized and ranked which elements are really floating to the top in terms of what those potential framework projects might be. And one of the questions that we have for you tonight is, you know, are those the framework projects that should continue through, you know, developing the draft plan that we'll be doing in the next, you know, six weeks or so when we come back to you after the first of the year, which is 2019, surprise, it's coming so quickly. But also, we've been doing a fair bit of work on the development code. We've provided some revised development code to you, and so provided we have time to step through that as well, we could talk to you about some of the changes we've made based on the comments you had during the last meeting. But with that, let's talk about some of the implementation measures. We've talked a little bit about this in the past, you know, how implementation is broken up into various pieces. You know, the regulatory actions, which are really getting the plan on the books and getting the specific components of the plan implemented into the development code, for example, you know, capital improvement programs, transportation system plan. I'm going to spend less time on that tonight, because that's a little bit more straightforward, to be honest. And I'm going to spend most of the time talking about the infrastructure pieces, because those are the big ticket items. But also, you know, the things that, from a transformational standpoint, really, you know, are the pieces that start to make the Town Center Plan become reality. And of course, placemaking and organizational strategies, we'll talk about that, too. The big picture question, I think, for Planning Commission and that the task force discussed at the last meeting is, you know, what's the city's role in supporting implementation? You know, is there, you know, a support from a business standpoint, an economic development support? Is there a support from a business standpoint, an economic development support? Is there a financial component to that? Is it building projects? What's that level and scale? And I think, from our standpoint and how we've seen these implement in the past, is that it's often a combination of those things. But that's a question for you as we get into the draft plan, is where are those points that the city really wants to step in, or conversely, where the city wants to step back and allow it to happen organically? So something to keep in mind as we talk tonight. So I'll just step through the staff actions from a regulatory standpoint, comprehensive plan and development code, we're already discussing that with you, we'll talk about that later tonight. There are some big hurdles based on the covenants, covenants, conditions and restrictions within Town Center that we've discussed, what actual allowed uses are within Town Center now based on relationship agreements that landowners have made even 20, 25 years ago. So how do we actually address some of these basic core issues? But then also, as this plan has developed, identifying those specific elements that should be amended with your existing plans, the transportation system plan, your parks plan, which I know is still in process, but are there changes that this plan that would be as a part of that future amendment phase to those pieces, or to those projects, excuse me. Additional studies from a regulatory standpoint, really focused on making sure that as much of the implementation strategy is housed within this plan, but there are a few things to consider moving forward. A parking management strategy is likely not warranted now, but as Town Center develops, really thinking about how parking is structured, particularly as the on-street network takes shape, as you start to get more of the local road system, how does that provide better access? How is on-street parking managed? That's not a challenge now, because you have very little on-street parking, for example, but as you start to develop more, those are some things that you'll need to consider in the future. And then a streetscape design plan. Again, we provided some high-level concepts with cross-sections about what the streetscape should look like based on public input, but getting down to really the nitty-gritty about, what do the trash receptacles look like? What are the benches? What are the specific patterning elements for each of those street pieces? And those are things that as you start to get into development of the streets, having that guiding document helps you be able to develop those streets in a coherent fashion. And I'd say even more importantly, as private developers come in and develop the local street network, being able to provide them guidance for approval of their plans when they develop. So just a couple pieces that studies to consider as you move forward. Again, not immediate needs, but things to consider in the next several years. So with that, I want to start talking more about infrastructure. We had a very high-level discussion during the last meeting about specific infrastructure projects, and just to define infrastructure, as we think about it, it's kind of your traditional stuff, it's sewer, water, stormwater, but then it starts to get into how are these projects incorporated into some of the bigger elements like the streetscape improvements? So when you build a street, there's that six inches of aggregate and concrete or asphalt there, but it's what's six to 10 feet below that street that really, to be honest, drives a lot of the cost for many of these projects. So when we thought about infrastructure, we looked at both your existing system, primarily your infrastructure system for sewer water and stormwater, and incorporated that into the streetscape costs. So when we were thinking about this, those are the types of things that you would do when you do street projects. You're not going to go out and move a sewer line right now if there's no reason to. But if you're developing Main Street, for example, that's a perfect time to start to clean up some of the stuff that's out there now that may not be as efficient or working properly. So we've incorporated those costs into each of our major project elements. And then we're possibly broken into sections, primarily like Parkway and others where those are big-ticket items and things that you could phase. So just as a reminder, we have, there's a number of projects in Town Center. The ones that are identified on this map are primarily, I don't say framework projects, but I want to say ones that have been identified as higher priority or likely have more of a public component to them. Many of those gray lines on the maps are the local street network, which you would see coming in as a part of development. And so, those would ultimately be part of the developer who builds those. And so, having a streetscape plan and those cross-sections to guide that is very important. But from a city standpoint, it's really these kind of key framework projects that we've heard from both the public and the task force are the most important considerations. And then how you phase those projects is also very important too, which we'll talk about in just a moment. So I'll show a few of these slides, and I just want to show you a brief exercise that we did with the task force. So we laid out all of the projects, the infrastructure projects, the economic development projects, the placemaking and kind of quick win concepts to, for one, laid out in a single matrix to see really what's on the table in terms of the project itself. And then we asked task force members to start to think about what makes the most sense. There's a lot of money on the table here, there's a lot of projects on this list, it's millions of dollars, and you can't do that all at one time. So what are the projects that start to bubble up to the top, that really start to make sense from the task force standpoint? When you look at the yellow dots, those are the priority projects. So we asked them to vote on their top five, just to start to whittle it down a little bit, and then we asked, it's like, which are the two most important projects out of those top five that you start, that makes sense to start to think about? We did give one red dot, the veto dot. If there is something absolutely not on this list that should not be done, regardless of whether or not it's in our project or not, we gave that option. And we only gave one, because there's a lot of good stuff up here, and most people agree, but some people don't. With this, the key outcomes from these exercises, and we had two groups step through this, I'll just show the other group. One group was pretty aligned in the types of projects they wanted, the other group was a little bit more mixed, but when it came down to prioritizing those projects, there was a lot of alignment in what those top two or three framework projects are. And the ones that came out as the highest priority were the Park Place projects. So that's the Park Place extension to Wilsonville Road. It's reconsidering the other two segments from Town Center Loop West to the south, down near the theater and behind Fry's, those are actually three separate projects. Those were ones that were the highest priority projects and received the most votes. And we discussed this after we voted to make sure that was confirmed, and it was. The other piece that was rated very highly were the Wilsonville Road intersections, and I'll explain those in a bit more detail in just a moment. But the interesting thing about the Park Place projects and the Wilsonville Road projects is that they're tied together. You wouldn't do Wilsonville Road until you did Park Place, because there isn't that demand to change how Wilsonville Road functions, and so you start to add another intersection onto Wilsonville Road itself. So the fact that these two things actually came up as the highest priority ones are great, because people are already starting to think about what, how these projects start to connect. But it also helps us, when you start to cost them, how you would actually start to phase those and how you would incorporate these various projects together. Couple others that came up, Courtside Drive, which is primarily the cycle track, and then some of the Town Center Loop West modifications, which is reducing, essentially doing a road diet on Town Center Loop West, which would be tied with how Town Center Loop East functions from the traffic discussion that we had during the last meeting. Those were also up there, but really, those key projects that came out were Park Place and Wilsonville Road. And then if you break it down further, when we asked, what's that one project or those two projects? The Park Place extension, which is from the park to Wilsonville Road, was the highest-rated project, and then Wilsonville Road was right behind that. So again, the task force, at least the group that was there that night, really saw that as the framework and the catalytic project for transforming Town Center from the vision that we've been talking about for the past two or so years. And with Wilsonville Road, we talked about the traffic analysis last time, but I just want to explain briefly how that actually functions. So assuming Main Street comes to Wilsonville Road, the Park Place extension happens, that's the second over from the left. Doing that new intersection actually provides a fair bit of benefit, as we talked about at the traffic analysis, but it does change how Town Center, excuse me, how Wilsonville Road functions. And to do that, those four signals essentially at Town Center Loop West, Town Center Loop West, the new Park Place extension, Rebecca and Town Center Loop East, start to function together, as opposed to independently like they do now. With Wilsonville Road and Town Center Loop West, left-hand turns from Wilsonville Road would actually be restricted. So you would have a different type of phasing for the signal, but what that does is that actually helps with some of the traffic flow right in that intersection, and then also allows for more bicycle and pedestrian connectivity within this intersection itself. So you have better north-south connections, but you also have shorter intersections that the pedestrians and bicyclists have to cross. And that's a benefit, because what we've heard from the public is people do want that connectivity. So there's been a lot of questions, it's like, well, if they're turning, if they can't turn left here, where are they going to go? So let's keep going down the path. So with these two signals, with the Wilsonville Road, Town Center Loop West, and the Park Place extension, those signals actually would operate as essentially a single signal. And so, this would, at this area, would allow a left turn, so a person wanting to make that left turn into Town Center could do it here. If they're looking to do more of a through route, they could actually go to Town Center Loop East, which would be modified to include that double left, which is essentially what's at Town Center Loop West right now. So this turn provides another option, having this extra intersection, but it also helps distribute the traffic better, because we talked about last time we were here. And then with Rebecca, right now, there's a signal there. Rebecca, that signal would actually be removed, and would be right in, right out. The key piece with that though is that there could be some type of pedestrian crossing with that, whether it's a beacon or something else to allow that north-south crossing on Wilsonville Road. But this would become much more of a pedestrian crossing than what there is today, because you'd have a bike shelter, a refuge, and then a flasher for pedestrians to cross. And then moving further to Town Center Loop East, this is where, what we talked a lot about is how do you start to alleviate some of the congestion at Town Center Loop West? And it's really starting to distribute that traffic more throughout the network. And by allowing double lefts onto Town Center Loop East, that allows some of the through traffic, people that really want to make that move to use Town Center Loop East instead of Town Center Loop West. And so, this distribution helps if somebody's going north, for example, from Town Center, they're trying to get through it, they can still use Town Center Loop East, but it fixes some of the issues that we had with Town Center Loop West. So overall, the network functions much better with these changes. By adding that signal and making them function more together, actually improves that. And I think from the public standpoint, who are folks who are concerned about traffic, it addresses that, but it also addresses the bicycle and pedestrian connectivity, providing more options for people to get across. The streets are a little bit narrower, particularly Town Center Loop West, Main Street has another connection for bikes and peds, and so it allows better permeability between the north and south sides of Wilsonville Road. So hopefully, Zach, did I cover that?
You got it.
All right, thank you. Put my non-traffic engineer hat on.
Are these smaller images in the online version here? We don't have them in our printed copy.
They should be in the...
The detail of the intersection.
If it was left out of your packet, I can make sure that I email it to you.
Good, thank you.
It was intended to be in your packet, but if it didn't make it in, I will make sure that we get that out to you.
Just those, the detailed images on those pages.
Difficult, yeah.
So on this subject, I had a question on Town Center Loop East. If you go back to the big map slide, the first one you've shown, slide seven, I think. Yeah, that one. You show Town Center Loop East as a proposed bike pedestrian project, but nothing for Rebecca. Is that? I was a little bit confused about where those projects came from and how they relate to the Wilsonville Road work and Rebecca Street.
Sure. So I'll start with Rebecca. Rebecca in that circle, the 12G, that would be included in the Wilsonville Road improvements. So that's essentially incorporates that intersection improvement, which is flashing pedestrian beacon and making it a right-in, right-out, as opposed to the signalized intersection it is now. Rebecca also is part of the local street network, and so, that would be developed if that connection, say Safeway or Rite Aid, were to redevelop over time. And that connection from Canyon Road now, Canyon Creek now, down to Rebecca happens, there's a variety of local road cross-sections that would be within the plan to actually address that bicycle and pedestrian connectivity. And that could include bike lanes, shared lanes, but the project itself is really focused in Wilsonville Road and the costs that are part of that element. Regarding Town Center Loop East, as a part of the process, there are cycle tracks that are recommended throughout Town Center, essentially connecting the pedestrian bridge in the northwest corner down to Memorial Park in the southeast quadrant. And that project I2K is that cycle track on the east side of Town Center Loop East. So that's a specific project within Town Center Loop East. The circle at the intersection of Wilsonville Road and Town Center Loop East is just the intersection itself. So there's a couple of different projects embedded within that.
How are these projects going to impact the business community and Main Street?
In what respect?
The streets that lead into these intersections particularly, are they going to be affected?
So where the streets are located now, or proposed, again, they're conceptual locations, but particularly for the Main Street connection from Wilsonville Road up to Town Center Park, that doesn't affect any businesses directly.
I was referring to the ones that are on the south side of Wilsonville Road, that's Main Street that I know.
So those connections would be maintained, south of Wilsonville Road. There may be some cut-through on the Main Street on the south side of Wilsonville Road, so you might see some circulation changes there. The benefit of that is that it's already actually been designed to do that function, but most people were expecting they're going to stay on Wilsonville Road if they're trying to leave Town Center. But there could be some opportunity for some additional vehicles to go through that Main Street that was designed to do that, but just hasn't since it was developed.
So you don't envision any real impact on those streets?
From the traffic analysis, we didn't see that, and certainly not where you'd want to redevelop it as a new street or something like that. Did that answer your question?
Yes, it does, thank you.
Are there other questions on this? First time we've shown pictures, so.
Thank you.
So with the infrastructure projects, again, there are a number in there, and we definitely want to have a discussion about those. I do want to talk just briefly about some of the other task force input that we've had, and some of the priorities that have come out for this. When we talk about quick wins, quick wins, just as a definition, are things that you could do now, or a business organization could do now with really very little funding. It could be a parklet competition, it could be putting up flower baskets out on the street. It could be things that don't necessarily require a request for proposals, or a major budget line item, but are just things that start to kind of change the flavor of an area. And those aren't necessarily city functions, I mean, they certainly can be, but often those are business districts, or even just businesses getting together in an impromptu fashion and starting to develop these. And there's a number of different ones you can do. So the list is kind of endless. We put in some of the bigger ones we've heard from the public, but also ones that we've seen work in very similar areas. And the great thing is that signage and wayfinding is something we've talked about throughout this process, and you're already working on that project, which is great. So thank you for implementing one of the pieces already. But there are some other things that, partly it's to get people to change the idea of what Town Center is, but it's also to get businesses activated and start talking to one another. Lunchtime farmer's market, we've heard several times, that why not have something in the street, or in a parking lot, or at the park? A couple folks have been interested in how we actually start to set that up, and they don't have to be large, these can be just a few stands. But food carts, festivals and performances are already things that you're doing some in Town Center, but are there ways to brand them or to partner with other types of quick wins? And then even enhancing existing pathways. That could be somebody sweeping the leaves off of the paths. Right now, if you ride your bike, it's really slippery out there. It's just kind of keeping up those types of things so there's accessibility. So when we think about placemaking quick wins, they're not $100,000 projects, it's somebody with a broom... It's somebody with a broom, or it's somebody who wants to manage the flowerpots outside. Very kind of low-hanging fruit, if you will. Some of the other pieces, and I'll show you how the task force voted in just a second. You know, are there more, or different types of organizational strategies that might make sense for Town Center? And these are, these are things that have worked on Main Streets, they've worked in business districts, but maybe there is like a district, a business district association affiliated with specifically with Town Center. Those have organizational qualities, but they also are ways that businesses can assess fees to themselves to actually start to do projects. We see a lot of that in downtowns from a clean streets standpoint. You've seen City of Portland, they have the street sweepers, people pushing carts and sweeping with brooms. Communities all across the country use that, but those are often business improvement districts or downtown associations that fund those. Those aren't often city-funded, funded ventures. But then there's others, you know, public-private partnerships. How do you start to get development happening? Supplemental fees, which could be through a business improvement district or something that a city might decide with business support that they collect and then you do projects within Town Center. And then other more formal pieces like the vertical housing tax exemption program, which are actually state programs, and a lot of jurisdictions have used those across the state to help fund mixed-use projects within, within a community. Hillsborough has used that pretty extensively. Tiger just implemented it a couple of years ago, and they're looking to do that within the Tiger Triangle to spur development. So there's more formal processes you can, and products you can use as well. So again, we, we asked the task force, and I will say that we had a lot of discussion on infrastructure within the task force, so some of these are not as filled out because we were, we asked where people were going to focus. But people really gravitated towards the programming and place-making pieces. And you can see yellow dots all over for what's important. But again, as those green dots, when we ask people prioritize, it starts to narrow itself down. This group did look at organizational economic development strategies, and they focused on just a few, but also had a fair bit of input on the programming and place-making. And this was interesting, because as we started to get into, you know, what the priorities are, signage and wayfinding was one of the number-one priorities for the task force. So it's great that this is already happening within Town Center. But the idea, and we've been talking about this for over two years, the idea of food is, you know, kind of a cornerstone for this process, but, you know, still talking about the farmer's market and food courts, to have options for people to go and to actually be attracted to Town Center. One that I was surprised about was improving bus stops. So, you know, just having that shelter there, and some, you know, there are some shelters out there, but is there a way to brand those shelters, you know, to make it more Town Center-ish, you know, just kind of using that existing infrastructure? And again, those are fairly easy things to do. But also enhancing existing pathways. That could be better marking, that could be keeping the, the leaves off them, that could just making sure that that amenity is there for all users at all times. From an organizational and framework standpoint, there was a lot of interest in some type of Town Center district, whether it's an improvement district or a Main Street district. You know, being, having that organizational quality that's Town Center-specific was important to the task force, and actually something we've heard from businesses as well with, you know, the various outreach that we've done over the course of the project. I will say that there was some disagreement among task force members, you know, the question of, you know, how does a business district within Town Center relate to the Chamber of Commerce or relate to, you know, other districts in the area? And I think the question is that, you know, really, you know, what does Town Center want for Town Center and with those businesses there? And anybody can form a business district, you know, any group of businesses can do that. It's really what's that organizing principle or that value that these businesses hold that, you know, makes it special that they want to be able to do that? And when we see, and we see successful ones, is that the Chamber of Commerce is always at the table, because they often provide resources, they're often city or region-wide, they can provide solid context for these, these districts that start to take shape. But having a business organization is, is a really essential way to get people involved and to actually attract future businesses as, as it moves forward. The other one, and this is something we've heard from businesses and, and the public, is, you know, having a tenant and business retention program. There are a lot of small businesses without, in Town Center. There's certainly Fries or, you know, Safeway, but it's mostly small local business that's within Town Center. And so not losing, you know, what Town Center is now for, for a grand vision in the future. So having a program where there's either transition, you know, help or, you know, just making sure that there's the outreach so you know what their, what their challenges and their, their needs are. One that was not supported was supplemental fees. Nobody likes supplemental fees. But I think the question with that is if it's standing on its own, if somebody's just assessing it without understanding what the value is behind that, that's a hard thing to implement. If you do it as a part of an association where people are going for a common cause, then that's something that's a little easier to talk about. So again, these are not all things that city necessarily does, but that the city certainly has a role in, in helping to initiate and establish. And we see that a lot in business improvement districts downtown, where there might be a city planner on the board. The city might provide seed money, but ultimately it's up to the, the businesses to, to get it going and, or keep it going and, and keep it running. So you're, you're a catalyst in itself, but you're not the end product or the end result from that, from that group.
Who charters such a district?
So it can be, it can be organized in a variety of, of ways. They're often nonprofits, so you'll have to have a board set up. And that's, that's a pretty typical business improvement district or downtown business association template. So you'll establish a board as a nonprofit, and then often a city will provide seed money to start that. And then the businesses, as they sign on, would agree to tax themselves or assess themselves, whatever percentage they decide to do to, to fund a number of projects or, or the organization. And that can be more the hardscape stuff, like somebody sweeping up the, the streets or picking up garbage, but it can also be used for programming. We see that in a lot of places where the downtown business association is used to actually program downtowns or Main Streets. They do festivals and, you know, help generate interest in the area, but also attract businesses too. So they become the face of the area itself. But it's usually done through a board with, usually with city assistance in the beginning.
Isn't it frequently also a subset of a Chamber of Commerce, though, as well?
Yeah, it can be. You know, there's often a chamber member on the board to start or some type of affiliation. I think the key with this is that this is not, the assumption is that this doesn't take the, doesn't replace the chamber as an advocate. It's really more of a focus for that specific, specific area. The chamber has a large number of responsibilities, and this is really like, okay, chamber's here, we have these 10 things we need to do in, in Town Center or Old Town or wherever that is, this is what we want to focus on. So they often do partner to make sure that they're, they're aligned.
Where in our region are there examples of this?
Oregon City has a great one. They have a Main Street program, and that's been responsible for a lot of, of the development down there. They were, actually Lloyd Purdy, who was on the Economic Development Forum, that, I don't know if folks, some folks were there back a month or two ago. He and Nancy Crushhour, when she was with City of Oregon City, were pretty strong partners in street scape, street scape improvements. From Lloyd's standpoint, attracting specific businesses into downtown, making sure that he was knocking on doors to, to know what the business issues were at the time, and so becoming an advocate for, for those businesses. And if you've been to downtown Oregon City recently, it's much different than what it was in 95, 96, when it was pretty blown out. It's, it's quite the successful space. Milwaukee's another one, that's a burgeoning downtown district, and those are, those are things that, you know, it takes time, but just having that little bit of advocacy really does help align businesses.
Is this being discussed in Chamber?
Is that? I think you may have addressed that question to another commissioner, but I would be happy to address that from the project team's standpoint. I, this, the Chamber representatives are on the task force, so this has been an item that's been in front of them through the project. There have been Chamber members present at all of the different sort of focus groups we've had with businesses and small businesses where this idea has come up. The idea has mostly come up, up till now, in terms of an identified need. You know, we need better organization. We need some type of ability to have more capacity, to have more programming, to liven up this area, and some type of coordination. This is, we're now getting to the implementation portion of the discussion where we talk about what are the different ways of doing that? And so this discussion just started in terms of ideas around, that could be a Main Street program, that could be a business district, that could be a subset of the Chamber, that could be one of, I have no idea what number, but dozens of different structural ideas where we're trying to learn from other places and think about, okay, so what is the best fit here? And we're not necessarily going to answer that question through this plan, right? This plan is to look at what are the concepts, what are the implementation actions that we want to look at? And so the action item here could be, you know, these five organizations partner to determine what that looks like. And so following up on the task force meeting that we had, three weeks ago now? Time is flying. I have actually discussed this with the Chamber of Commerce a couple more times to talk about what, you know, what might that look like and what might their role be in that, so that we can provide a little bit, maybe more direction in this plan, so that it's not as open-ended and it couldn't take on life forms that maybe we don't anticipate or want, and instead provide some type of direction for what that future study or conversation would look like. Because again, we're not going to lay out all the specifics of any of these implementation items really, except for infrastructure projects and code work. But these place-making and economic development strategies are things that, there will be information in the plan that says, here's what we need to assess in implementing those items. Because they're really concepts and ideas that have come out of the process, but need to be fully fleshed out more. So I don't know if that answers your question. They are engaged at the table, and we're working with them as we go through this process, but I don't anticipate we'll have a final resolution, that this will be an ongoing, my hope, is that this is actually planting a seed of something ongoing, that after this plan is finished and we're implementing these things, we'll be continuing to work together on it.
It, it does answer my specific question. I, I've asked before about what communication is taking place among the, the business owners in the existing Town Center. And it seems to me that if things are going to get moving forward, there has to be some kind of coordinated interest on the part of those business owners to make it happen, make something happen. And we have within Wilsonville an effective business organization, which, which could, it seems to me, have a role in that. We can't do it simply by laying out a concept, pie in the sky concept, what we think the place ought to look like 20 years from now. The, the real problem is getting from here to there, and that requires some movers.
I think that-
Kind of get it started.
They're there, they're there, as long as we're all willing to partner together, they're there.
And I think that's, that's the key piece with this, is having an advocate within the business community to, to do that. I mean, this does take, this does take effort. You know, the city can often act as, as the initial catalyst of, through your economic development partner or department. But certainly, I wouldn't expect that that's, you may start it, but you shouldn't be in the, in the seat to always be the one having to lead it. You know, there, there needs to be interest from the businesses to be able to, to do that. And from what we've heard, there, there are some very engaged businesses in Town Center, you know, that if given the opportunity, maybe would, maybe would do that. But this is just one option, as Miranda said.
So I think the questions that are up on your screens are areas that we specifically, the project team, would benefit from having input from the commission in starting to really understand what priorities the commission thinks the city should have in terms of infrastructure framework projects, what role you'd like to see in, with these ideas that we've put in front of you, what role you think the city should play in these projects and different ideas. And including the organizational and economic development strategies, because those are, there's a lot of different ways we could go there. We've heard a lot from the community. That's, the community, a lot of times gravitates towards that, right? They, they knew they wanted places like a Main Street and the promenade and the cycle tracks, so those are in our infrastructure list. They also know they want more programming, they want more place-making, they want more things happening. And there's a lot of things that are on that list. And so if we, once we implement, or once we adopt this plan, staff is going to need some direction in terms of where we want to focus our time, how we want to, who we want to partner with, and how we want to get those off the ground. So we really would like input from you on which of those strategies you think the city should include in the plan, or which ones should be prioritized, and who we should be partnering with on those. We already have some ideas based on the outreach we've already done, but we want your input on that as well.
So I think the first question, do those, do those framework projects, Wilsonville Road, extension of, of Park Place, are those, based on what you've, you've heard, are those the, are those the framework projects? Are there other ones we should be, should be thinking about?
The ball's in our court.
I'll say my, my vote would be for, for the Park Place from top to bottom. I mean, I, I saw some of the priorities of it being B and D, but you can't leave out the middle. It, it just doesn't work if you do that. So, you know, whether you start at the south side and work north, or start at the north side and work south, I don't know if it, I think that can be a point of discussion, but I think that Park Place area is, is my key in terms of, of having a catalyst to start really bringing this project together.
I, I would agree with that. I think that without that, you don't, it becomes, thank you. It's too abstract without that. With that, you've got something concrete to start building around. Without that, it's still, it, it, it doesn't have a, it doesn't have a place. And with that, it has a place then to start moving out from. So I think that's a, a critical piece that, and that's one that, that the city can take a fairly active role. I mean, it, yes, we need all these other things, but the city can be a driver in this very easily.
I struggle with this a bit, and simply because I think the framework has to start with what's available for the businesses who are going to both build this and operate it, what's sustainable there. And I'm still concerned when I see things like footprint limitations. And I, you know, I brought this up last time, where we're, we're limiting things like drive-throughs, and I'm going to mobilize the public who may be watching this on television. Your, the drive-throughs that you're restricting means we'll, we'll never see a Dutch Brothers in this kind of area, right? We're, we're, we're limiting ourselves so much. And, and so much of this is based upon this expectation that this is what we would like to build, but it may not be what businesses can build and make it economically sustainable. We're tying their hands so much. And so, I mean, it's great to talk about infrastructure projects, and let's start here, and maybe that will be the catalyst. But I think the catalyst is, is making sure that we have a plan in place that makes it possible for somebody to build this thing in an economically feasible way. And I, I guess I'm still struggling with thinking that that's there, because I, I've said this over and over again, and, and I think that experts in the field, including one that we previously hired, has said the same thing, and that's to remove the potential for anchor tenants, I think, might be disastrous for something like this, and it may be a recipe for it to never be built. I don't know, I'm not an expert in that realm. I'm just listening to what other experts are saying. But we're removing those sorts of possibilities with the, the code and some of the limitations that we currently have in place. So I, I'm struggling to say, okay, well, let's, let's, let's start this to be the thing, to be the catalyst to get there, because I still think that, I, I still struggle to see that we're, we're in a spot where businesses can get interested in doing this just yet. That's just me, and, and forgive me, but I, I deal with a lot of people in the business community, both with my clientele and amongst the Chamber, and that's, that's the concern that I'm hearing, is, is, is this a sustainable project such that we want to invest in building it? And, and I don't, I don't think we're there yet, right? To be honest, I just don't think we're there yet.
Do you think, from a, an anchor tenant standpoint, what, when you, when you, when you say anchor tenant, what is, what is a square footage that comes to mind for that?
50.
And could that be on two stories? Or could that be?
I don't think that's sustainable, not realistically, I don't think. You know, you can find your anchor tenants that can work in smaller spaces, like your Trader Joe's, for instance, that can work. But again, it's- But again, it's, if you limit the market based upon something like a square, a footprint size, you're just waiting for the person you've kind of designated ahead of time to show up and say, I'm willing to invest right here, rather than saying, okay, business community, this is open, tell us what you can build based upon, and I just, I don't want to see us put in the cart before the horse. That's what concerns me. And it's just, my concern comes from the fact that we keep talking about this, but we kind of, we kind of keep missing that element. So, and just other simple things, like I said, I mean, drive-throughs. I had mentioned last time that it seems like there's some corners there where, you know, drive-throughs aren't going away, they're just not. And if we're going to legislate them out of existence in this area, again, you know, those are lunch opportunities, those are destination opportunities. I mean, we don't like drive-throughs, but if In-N-Out wanted to come here tomorrow, would we be, would we be smart to say, yeah, no, this, these corners aren't going to work for you? Maybe we don't. I don't know, but we're limiting ourselves so much, and that concerns me. I don't even think I can answer the question as to what's the, what's the initial framework type of projects, because I think the framework on what we're making possible to be built here is already a little bit too limited, but, my perspective.
Thank you, that's a tough argument to follow. So we have, we have two coffee shops right now in this area. Now, of course, one of them is a drive-through. And I guess we're not going to be, you know, closing those places, that place down by the introduction of this plan.
We're going to make them a whole lot more valuable pretty soon.
But, you know, I think the general idea was to provide a walkable neighborhood that would be safe for kids to be walking around, and, you know, there is generally a concern with vehicles and pedestrians and dealing with those conflicts. I'm not, I'm not saying we should never have drive-throughs, and maybe there's, maybe you've got a good point that there's specific corner locations at the outside or close to the, close to the Town Center Loop East perhaps, if that's the main traffic throughways. But I think, I think in general, we want to think about this Main Street area as a walkable area, and it's the Main Street that we had the most restrictive codes for. The rest of it, to my understanding, was pretty wide open. Not, maybe not was wide, maybe not quite as wide open as your-
Not by the code that we're looking at, so.
At the opposite extreme of drive-through, actually, one of the concepts that we've been thinking as it would be a plus in this development is the possibility of, in fact, the invitation to Terry, to just to come and be, which is at the opposite extreme of driving through. So there may be an area within Town Center which is, where drive-through really is antithetical to the concept that we're looking for, but other areas on, as you suggest, on the periphery might be more amenable to that.
Yeah, that's what I'm looking for. And I, so I still agree that the Main Street is one of the first things we should be looking at, prioritizing. I'm aware that Park Place already exists to the center and the north, and so, you know, it makes sense for the southern part, the one, the I-2D section to be prioritized where we can. I'm not sure what would need to be done related to the existing businesses and the parking lot, and all those sorts of details about how that would work. I'm also excited to see a buffered bike lane on Town Center Loop East, or an improvement of the buffered bike lane on that southern section of Town Center Loop East, so that approaches Wilsonville Road, because right now, the bike lane kind disappears right at the bottom. And so, you know, this system would fix that and would at least provide a more complete bike connection. Not so interested right now in the north, the northwestern corner towards the bridge, because there is no bridge. If there was a bridge, then that would be more important. I don't know what the schedule for building that bridge over the I-5 would be, but until that's there, there's not really much point in prioritizing that part of the bike lane.
Well, maybe from a prioritization standpoint, tying that improvement to that project itself, to the pedestrian bridge itself. That's only one thing we're starting to look at, is, you know, what goes first? And so when we ask what that framework project is, is it, is it the Park Place extension, you know, or is it the cycle track? You know, what's the, what's that, what's that number one project?
Yeah, I think number one has got to be the Park Place.
I agree. Have we referred to that as, have we used the Main Street nomenclature for that, informally at least? There is a Main Street, as I understand it, as I recall, there is actually a Main Street so-called, which is south of Wilsonville Road. But Park Place is kind of, functions as a Main Street for this area.
Correct. It's received the Main Street District nomenclature, mostly because when we went out to the community and we asked them, what would you like to see, and we showed them different pictures, and different concepts came up about like village centers, or, you know, different types of neighborhoods. And one thing that kept coming back was this idea of a Main Street, a place where you go and you can walk down the street, and there's shops and restaurants, and it's a kind of typical type of place that we see. And people didn't want to create a historic Main Street, because we don't have that history here, but they're interested in a modern Main Street that's that type of place. And so we haven't, we do have a Main Street in town already, a street with the name Main Street. So this would be an extension of Park, be probably called Park Place, but it serves as a Main Street for the Town Center area.
I think Park Place is a really classy name for a street. To have business in Park Place, that'd be really fine. As a business developer, I would welcome that, wouldn't want to change it.
It's the second most valuable property on Monopoly, boy.
Exactly.
It's got to be doing better.
That's in our cultural consciousness.
Can we name it Broadway?
That would be my number one priority for certain.
Any other discussion on that one from the Commission? Haven't heard from anyone.
I suppose here's a place where it is relevant to ask whether our planning to this point, to the rather nebulous, nonspecific kind of concept that we're putting out there, is anything we're doing likely to be a disincentive to businesses being interested?
I think that gets Commissioner Postma's question of, you know, one, what type of businesses are you, are you trying to attract within Town Center? You know, is it, is it large format retail? Is it auto-oriented? So if you're looking to increase the street grid, you know, providing these other connections, you know, that may, that's a different land use forum than, say, Argyle Square, you know, which is, which is large format retail with large parking lots. So it is, it is a consideration, and that's something that we've been talking about with the community for a long time, like what actually is Town Center? And, you know, the hub or the heart, you know, keeps coming back to that, and when we ask them if that's Argyle Square, they say no. So it is that smaller scale development pattern, or type, you know, more compact development pattern.
Possibly street-level business residential above.
Or, you know, or, you know, commercial other spaces, but not, not one that has a large sea of parking necessarily.
No big boxes.
No big boxes. And I think, you know, you're seeing a lot of different formats, like, you know, Targets, Walmarts, others, you know, looking at how their templates have changed over time. And, you know, we're seeing, actually, on Powell Boulevard, if you haven't seen it, on about 36th, they took an old AMF bowling alley, and it's now a Target. So you're actually seeing, you know, traditionally large format retailers going into 25,000 to 50,000 square feet sites, and, you know, their selection is not as large, but the online portion of their selection is exactly the same as what those big box areas are. So the transition in retail is going to smaller floor plates. Not everywhere, but certainly in a lot of locations, and we're seeing those big retailers start to, you know, modify their development to fit. So is it a disincentive for fries? Certainly. For, you know, a mixed-use development that wants to put in small-scale restaurant, you know, things like that, then it could certainly be an incentive to have, to be in Town Center.
Although to clarify, I think, you know, there'd be a disincentive for a new fries to be built. I think the clarity I would want to make is that for property owners who own property, this also could create incentives for them, new opportunities to do development that doesn't currently exist under our existing development code and Town Center plan.
Thank you. And just for the sake of clarity, I mean, I think that's, I mean, you kind of made my point for me, right? I mean, there are some of these anchors that are moving to smaller format. I mean, normally you used to think of anchor meant you needed 100,000. And I don't think that's what I'm advocating for. I understand that we're trying to move away from that, but you still have to create a destination-type feel in order to attract some people to get there. And if our notion is, is that the destination comes from, only from small businesses, I worry about the viability of that. And that's why I said before that 50 sounds about right to me. You know, the hope is, you don't need, you know, multiple people who need 50, but if you limit it to that, then like you said, I think there's a lot of retailers in particular, right, that have online presences, see that they can get smaller, because a lot of it is just, they're actually just kind of a delivery point. We want a place for you to shop and browse and touch and feel, but a good portion of what's happening here is, is you're ordering online and you're picking it up over there, and that works. Then you've made a destination, and guess what? You're there at a restaurant while you're there, or you go visit another local shop while you're there as well. It's still that notion of destination that I think is missing if we're not careful with it. And I don't want anybody to understand that I'm advocating for more fries. I'm not. I don't, I don't think that's what we want to see. I'm advocating for that destination notion, which is, is that other small businesses will be attracted there if they can see the foot traffic is going to arrive, because there's other points of destination for them to come to.
Certainly, certainly.
To springboard from Commissioner Postma, what he's made me think about in regards to kind of the whole piece to this, for the economics of it, and I'm not an economist, but a couple of things that we need to keep in mind is that it sits next to I-5 with a major interchange there. So the concept that it's, you know, that it can only, or it's going to stand on its own with economic viability of being just walkable, tight-knit neighborhood kind of thing, I think it, you know, it's not taking into consideration that you've got millions of people traveling up and down I-5 every day, that's a huge piece of the economics of it, because as we look out this window right here, we have, you know, single-family homes on, you know, 5,000 to 8,000 square foot lots. That's not going to be the demographics or density that we need to keep stores alive. We can barely keep what we've got here alive as it is. So, and then the second part of that is that for anybody that's been in the metro area long enough, when, when the MAX line was put into the airport, Bechtel was the one who put in the MAX line to the airport, and they were given the rights to develop, what's it called, the, where all the shopping is?
Where the IKEA is, yeah.
Cascade.
Cascade Station, right. So, but the city said, no big box. City Council, Portland said, no big box stores at Cascade Station. We want people to take MAX there, and we want them to be small. Well, Bechtel sat on that land for over a decade without it being built, until they finally went to the city council and said, nobody wants to be here. Finally, IKEA said, okay, we'll go there. Yeah, the landscape of retail is changing dramatically. Yes, Sears is shutting down, JCPenney's is shutting down, Macy's is shutting down, Lowe's is shutting down. All these major big places are shutting down, but we're still going to want to be able to go in and decide whether or not this pen or this pen, you know, so yes, we're going to still want to touch these things and go to a regular store. But as Commissioner Postma was saying, I think that we need to be careful in regards to what we prescribe to the economics of it, especially considering that this could easily be a 30 to 40-year plan. And what we see today is not going to be what it's going to look like when they finally get around to deciding to build. And I'd like to see that to be very elastic. You know, just even in the next 10 years, people probably aren't going to be asking for bus stops, they're going to be asking for Uber stops and Lyft stops. People aren't going to be taking the bus. So I'd like to see it to be, you know, elastic in that sense, and if we've got some of the infrastructure there, or at least guide the infrastructure for the rest of it, and a template of what we think we want it to look like and feel like, the rest of it, the economic, I mean, that's just the window dressing on the economics of it, working and to say, you know, we don't want a lot of cars or what have you. I mean, if you've got people that are working in a flex space or whatever, but we're right on I-5, they're going to be coming in from Woodburn. And we just heard a couple of weeks ago that, or months ago, that Woodburn's now the suburb for Wilsonville. So people are still going to be driving here, and, you know, again, they're probably not going to be taking, smart, they're probably going to be taking Uber from Woodburn to here.
Or pods.
Whatever, or a self-driving car. But you see what I'm getting at, and leaving that flexibility, because things are so dynamic right now. I mean, who knew that GE was going to be junk? Junk bond status today, right? You know, so, I mean, it's happening so fast.
These are all great comments, and a lot of these are comments about what we're going to be talking about in the upcoming slides, so I'm wondering, we have a couple other questions up here, and just to, you know, honor your time, I know, I want to make sure we respect that. Is there anything else, either from the projects, organizational components, things that we need to cover tonight, or can we move on to the zoning discussion? Because we did have a few comments that, or you had a few comments from the last meeting I want to make sure we talk about, particularly drive-throughs and the floor plate MAX, because we, those we talked about last time, and we'd love some clarity on that. So is there anything else on this slide that we need to cover, or can we move on to zoning? Because we've been talking a lot about zoning.
I think we can move on.
All right, thank you. All right, so let's talk about zoning. All right, so from the comprehensive plan standpoint, just as a reminder, we are proposing a new comprehensive plan designation, Town Center designation, which would be a new comprehensive plan section that we had provided at the last meeting. We didn't identify any changes as a part of this meeting last time, and so we haven't made any changes to that. So before we move into the zoning, were there any questions or comments, as you reviewed it the second go-round, that we need to discuss?
Let's get into the meat of it.
All right, moving right along. So I'll step through specific sections where you asked us to consider changes within the code. First and foremost, Commissioner Postma, within the commercial mixed-use district, that's the district that is immediately adjacent to I-5, that's the larger format area, office area with some residential. There is a question about, what is that? There was a question about whether or not that 30,000 square feet MAX was within a single-story building or a two-story building, you know, how that, how that could function. Within the code, we are requiring two-story buildings at a minimum for the entire district that was guidance given several months ago, so we've continued that. I think the question now, though, is, you know, what is the appropriate floor plan max, floor plate max for that? And I guess before we start that question is, knowing that these are multi-story buildings, should we give consideration to allowing, you know, two stories of commercial, for example? If we do a 50,000 square foot MAX, could you do 100,000 square feet if it's on two stories? Or if it's 30,000 square feet, could you do 60,000 on two stories? Knowing that we are looking at multi-story buildings within this district. So with that, I mean, is there additional conversation or discussion we need to have So, with that, I mean, is there additional conversation or discussion we need to have about that point? Because right now, within the draft code, it's 30,000 square feet.
Is that per floor or total?
That is per floor.
I've said my piece.
So, it may be reasonable. I think we were thinking of multi-story in terms of mixed-use, as in to have, you know, retail on the, on the first floor and either office or residential on the floors above. But we, somebody mentioned IKEA earlier, that's actually a two-story building at the airport. I don't, that's probably 100,000 square feet.
Probably more than that.
More than that.
Probably 200, yeah.
Yeah.
It's both retail and warehousing.
Yeah, it's warehousing, right. Yeah, you have to, except you have to collect your own. So, I think in general, yes, it may be, it may be possible that, to imagine two-story retail. In this particular area, this CMU district, we probably have no business in restricting that, is my thought.
If I remember, the idea behind a minimum of two stories was to make sure that we build in higher density, higher activity, and so forth in this area. Having commercial, to me, is fine. Two stories of commercial, to me, meets my kind of interest in seeing increased level of activity per acre of land that is being developed. Mixing commercial with office, although that has a good exposure on I-5, so I would be surprised if those buildings stay at two stories. I would expect that they probably will be higher than that. So, it may not matter, but it would be, to me, kind of a funny use of 30,000 or 50,000-square-foot commercial first floor and just offices on the second floor, unless they're all part of the same kind of business. It's kind of a weird mix to me with two floors. If it's higher, I can see that. I was thinking Bridgeport has stores that are two stories, two floors, furniture and stuff like that, even bookstores. So, that, to me, feels like, you know, the kind of increased level of intensive activity.
Can somebody calibrate me on what size building the 50,000-square-foot or 30,000-square-foot would be for an existing building in the area?
Albertson's is 60, if I'm remembering right.
Okay.
Safeway's, I think. Safeway's is 20 to 25, something like that.
No, it's bigger than that.
Trader Joe's in Hollywood District's about 25 to 30?
Yeah.
On that scale.
And just to be clear, that Albertson's at 60 is, is not including the Safeway, excuse me, the Starbucks and stuff.
Okay.
So, it's just their old footprint.
Mm-hmm.
You know, I'm wondering if, if some of it's street frontage that we're more concerned about than the general size. You know, I think some of the concern is, you have this gigantic box right on the street, and so you don't see anything else. I wonder if it, if it is somewhat a question of geometry, and if you still had the ability to have other small businesses on the street frontage and still had a decent-sized entrance for a larger retailer?
Sure.
Where some of that was more behind, maybe that still serves the purpose, gives them the footprint that they need, but still accomplishes our goals by having that feeling of density in the smaller places, while still giving us the opportunity to have a smaller, or a larger retailer that could be that, that anchor tenant.
Yeah. And I'm trying to think of where I'd seen it before, but I'd actually seen some of the concept where you've got retail on the floor, and there's like, on one side of the building, there's like a lobby area for offices up above. So, you'd have like a traditional kind of large lobby area for an office building, and then you get up a floor or two, and there's offices. So, I'm trying to think of where I've seen it.
Yeah, I've seen that, not, just not one more floor. It's usually more than one.
Yeah.
I mean, if you do that, then you go higher, is what I was thinking. It would be strange that you just go up one.
You're right.
Yeah, the financial metrics of that would probably require a taller, taller building. But what I'm hearing, Commissioner, is, you know, if there's a larger floor plate, that potentially some requirement for frontage, either smaller business or something along those lines, so it's more the streetscape environment as opposed to the scale of the building. Is that, is that correct?
Yeah, I think that would fit my, my desires for, for being more of that, you know, sense of place, and it's not just a Home Depot sitting on the, on the Main Street. But you still have that ability to generate that traffic.
Okay.
One of the struggles I have with larger commercial stores is that the kind of traffic that it creates is a, a car-dependent, you know, destination and then out grocery shopping, whatever shopping kind of a traffic. It's not a lingering traffic. And this area is large enough, I think, on the edges to have stuff like that, where you're close to the, the main arteries to get in and out. Is that kind of an anchor going to add to the core of this redevelopment area? I'm not sure. I'm not convinced that it will. And it may be that this is going to be just a transitional kind of a development, that those kinds of anchor, if you want, presences occur, help develop the kind of residential development, mixed-use that is necessary, so that you have resident folks in here. We're not going to go anywhere in the evening, they're just going to walk around to their favorite places and sit on the park bench or whatever. And then you're going to start seeing the development organically of a more cohesive, more substantive kind of a community center here. I don't want to do anything that prevents this phased kind of development, organic development. I worry that if we don't, if we are too flexible and too elastic, if anything goes, then anything will go, and it'll become just anything. And I don't think this area is going to be able to compete with Bridgeport. Downtown de Casbigo doesn't have those kinds of large anchors, and it seems to be doing fine. They're not competing with Bridgeport. So, I, we're, I think we are trying to find our place and make sure that it fits and is culturally relevant, and it's going to be sustainable, as Commissioner Postma is saying. I just, I'm struggling with the need for flexibility and then not being so loosey-goosey that just anything can, can happen as well.
I guess my challenge with the Lake Oswego area is, you know, at least the area that I'm, you know, around Salt and Straw and that area is, that is a compact area. We're talking about a significantly larger area here, and so we need to, if that was all we were talking about, and we were cutting off, you know, a quarter of this and saying, that's town center, okay, this would be a whole separate discussion. And, you know, that, that drive to, we've got to maintain, you know, smaller footprint would make absolute sense, but this is a huge area. And so, how do we have that flexibility to make sure that we can make it successful, but still meet those goals of, of having that active parkplace area is, is, I guess, where I'm struggling, trying to figure out how we can get there.
And to your point, when I think about downtown Lake Oswigo, what is that, First Street? It tees into, is that First Street? That has a lot of businesses on it as well. I think of that as downtown as well. And to Commissioner Postma's point, there is 365 within walking distance, as you go that way, and a movie theater. So, on the edges of downtown Lake Oswigo, within walking distance, you have those car-dependent businesses that have easy access and egress. And if we can create some, some dynamic like that here, where as we get closer to the core of, of the town center, it becomes smaller and more granular. And on the edges, it has a little bit more flexibility for the 365s of New Seasons of the world. Then that would be, I think, a balance.
Well, and I think from the code standpoint, that's kind of how we're, we've established it, you know, the, the maximum floor plate, this is the only area that that's, we've been discussing that primarily because of its highway visibility and, you know, existing development pattern. So, if that, if that were the commission's move, is to allow a little more flexibility in this area for that development type, that could certainly, you know, it doesn't mean you have to do it on Main Street. You know, you could, you could do it in this area, which is, you know, kind of on its, in its corner, per se.
I think that's been kind of my problem with this project from the start. I just, it was, it was too massive. I couldn't envision what this looked like at all. I mean, it was, and it just never gelled for me. But listening to everybody tonight, it's sort of like, if we designate this core area and then kind of almost concentric rings out from that, where different kinds, larger drive-throughs, whatever are permissible, then we're not closing this off. But we have this nice, finite area that is, that is restrictive, because we want it to be something different, something special, with the park and then other little parks and things. But then, as you move out away from that, I, I think that's kind of what I'm hearing people saying. And to me, now, I can, I can envision that. This other thing was too, too messy. I couldn't, I couldn't see it. So, if, if, if maybe our code could be that, within a certain radius of parkplace, if that's our center street, then it has to be like this. And as you move out away from that, our code says, we, we are more expansive in what's allowed. I think that's what I'm hearing everybody saying, and that, that makes sense. I mean, that, that makes business sense, too, because in this central core area, how many small businesses are you really, truly going to have? I mean, the reality is, you know, the, the specialty shops, like you might get up on, you know, on 33rd or something like that, we're not going to have those. Maybe we will, but I kind of doubt, on 23rd, rather, are we going to have those kind of things? And then a restaurant, and then a little, you know, boutiquey kind of clothing store, and then another restaurant, and, and that. But, but that's in a more confined area. And then housing, you know, obviously, on that. But then if you, I guess if the code could be written so that as you move away from that very central core, it's, it becomes more expansive. Does that make sense?
No, it does, thank you.
Don't we have that? I mean, with, with the sub-district, don't we, we've, we have the Main Street district really clearly identified. In fact, this attachment B.
Park Place District.
Have you, yeah. Oh, okay. Well, it's, it's called MSD, and Main Street district throughout the code, so I wouldn't want to.
He's proposing PPD, I think, is what he's having for right now.
I, I, what I'm not understanding about this, in, I'm looking at this attachment B here from, and the page two, which I guess is also page 24 or 48. The permitted and prohibited usages, we have this section, you know, talks about commercial mixed-use there, and then Main Street, and then all the drive-throughs. I'm just not clear on whether these are permitted or prohibited, because the wording isn't, isn't clear to me. So, 30,000 square feet, for a start, is that, is that, it's permitted everywhere within, within town center to, to build smaller than 30,000, to build commercial recreation with outdoor facilities or indoor facilities? 30,000 square feet is the upper limit, right?
That's the maximum floor plate. And what I'm hearing tonight is that maybe within the commercial-mixed-use, maybe that's increased a bit, but maybe we need to be a little more stringent on some of the other areas, like, like Main Street, for example. And again, we were, we were thinking about, you know, if there's a mixed-use building that has an anchor tenant, you know, New Seasons or something like that on the ground floor, that maybe that's, maybe that wouldn't be bad to have on a Main Street, per se. But, you know, if that would happen other places, then we would, you know, we could still have it over there.
Not Main Street, but the, the, the other, the other area, which is probably the biggest, is the mixed-use area. That, maybe that is permissible to have, you know, to have those larger, perhaps two-story retail in the mixed-use area.
So, the reason it's a little confusing, I agree with you, is if you're on the first page, there's uses permitted anywhere in town center zone, and E is retail sales under a footprint of 30,000 square feet per use.
Thank you, missed it.
So, that's kind of the precedent of, pretty much, there's a max of 30,000 for a footprint. It could be 30,000 on three stories and be 90,000, but it's 30,000 per footprint of a building throughout the town center. That's the, everything's allowed at 30,000 or below. And then, what commercial-mixed-use is saying, where you're referencing under point 03A1, is saying that in this commercial-mixed-use area that's adjacent to I-5, that we could, oh, so we only allowed it for multi-story in this area?
Well, I think there's, I think there's a disconnect between those two sections. Thank you for pointing that out.
Okay, yeah. So, there is a disconnect. I thought we were making it allowable really anywhere, as long as the footprint isn't greater than 30,000 square feet. But that's up for, I mean, that's been part of the discussion tonight. I mean, the reason we had picked 30,000 was to try to maintain this vision that the communities had of walkable, friendly, less kind of auto-dependent uses, right, in the center of Main Street. So, I think you've raised a, the panel is raising a good question, and this is not clear. It didn't say what I thought it said.
Yeah, we need to.
So, I think there's a few things, is where should the 30,000 be? Is there a max per use that we care about? At this point, I think a lot of what we've talked about is the footprint. So, I think the first question that I would have is, do we care about an overall max, or is it really about the footprint? And then if it's about the footprint, we have 30,000 square feet that we know, I think what I've heard tonight, is that's clear on the Main Street in the MSD. Then the question is, is, does it go bigger than that in other areas? Which areas? And I think for the most part, what I've heard in the past from the task force and the commission is that there has been no real concern, there isn't really a concern on the overall max, it's more about the footprint max that people care about. So, if a Target wants to go into a two- or three-story building, it's really the footprint that we care about from what that creates in terms of the public realm and the walkability of the place. But that's what we've heard to date in the conversation.
Well, but excepting that creates a parking dilemma we maybe don't want. I mean, a 90,000-foot, three-story Target.
They would have to provide parking.
Yeah, exactly. So, I mean, maybe it fixes itself, because it's just not economically feasible. But I mean.
Or it's feasible, and they build a garage, and you potentially get additional spaces that other.
Maybe it works for other stuff, exactly. And have, has, have we done the due diligence to even know? I mean, does multi-floor, does multi-floor retail like that, is it going to be prohibitive, whether it be cross-prohibitive, or it's just not convenient to shop, and so that in itself may be a problem?
I think what we're hearing so far is that, from a market standpoint, retail's moving away from that anyway.
Is moving away from a big, single-floor?
Is just moving away from large-format period, whether it's a single-floor or multi-story.
But we're talking 100, like 50 to 100, or large?
Yeah.
Okay, yeah.
So, unless you're in a very large metropolitan area, like a downtown New York City, Chicago, even potentially like a downtown Seattle, Portland, you may still see a multi-story Target, like we have in down, that there is in downtown Portland. But in general, in places even like Portland or other major cities, you're starting to see folks like Target, a lot of the grocery chains, a larger, the larger, even Amazon, moving into much smaller floor plate buildings, whether that's single-story or multi-story. You're seeing a lot more smaller space. So, in terms of does that, have we done the due diligence? Yes, we've done a feasibility analysis, and a three-to-four-story Target in Wilsonville Town Center would not occur, would not be able to financially pencil out in the next five years. That would not be feasible. That would not be feasible. If you're looking at a 20-year horizon, yes, it could be potentially pencil and feasible, but at the same time, we're looking at a retail environment that's significantly shifting in the 20-year timeframe. And so the question is, do we want to allow it or not? I, you know, we don't know what it'll look like in 20 years.
Yeah, but I guess my question is still, you know, let's just say you had a 50,000-foot facility that was 25 and 25 on two floors. I mean, is that the sort of thing that people just don't feel comfortable shopping? I have no earthly clue. That's what I'm trying to figure out.
There's a, there's a Target at Mall 205 that's probably 80,000 square foot floor plate, and it's got two stories. And kid stuff's upstairs and all the clothing is down on the, on the main floor. So I think it's, from the retailer standpoint, it's maximizing whatever space they, they get, and they, they put in an elevator. Fred Meyer's doing it as well. They put in an elevator and escalators, and that's just kind of what, what it is. But I think it does go to, you know, what's, what's the overall scale of that? I think it has less to do with the heights. But, yeah, from a feasibility analysis, you know, multi-story office is very challenging, and multi-story commercial is very, very challenging within the environment right now.
Right. Things have certainly changed since I was young when we had, well, yeah, right, yeah. I can remember it. When we had Sears Row Books, Montgomery Ward, Meyer &amp; Frank. You don't know Meyer &amp; Frank before you were born.
I look through this JCPenney and Sears catalogs every year for Christmas, went past all of the clothes and went right to the toys. Picked everything out that I wanted.
Meyer &amp; Frank was a multi-story department store downtown and very successful. It didn't fold because it didn't have business, I don't think. It folded for whatever reasons. But I don't, we're not talking about that. It doesn't seem to be on our, in our, in our vocabulary, in our palette today to be talking about those stores.
They've all gone.
Well, there's, there's a variety of reasons. I mean, people write books about this, but, you know, it's JCPenney's, Meyer &amp; Frank, all, all of those stores, Macy's, they, they are not able to respond to what people want immediately. And so you'll see firms or companies like Zara, Zara, even H&amp;M, where they'll, they have fashion hunters, which will take a picture of somebody on the street, and within three weeks, it's, it's in the manufacturing and it's in the, in the, in the stores. Macy's, they do things by season, and they're usually projecting two to three seasons out. And so if you can tell me what my kid's going to look, want to wear in a year, that's a great business model. But it's, it's, that's one reason why those big chains are, are, they're just not able to compete with the faster, faster processes and, and development. But that's not a code issue. That's a, that's a market and retail issue, but it does affect the scale of a building and how fast buildings are able, or businesses are able to manufacture.
It is a code issue, and we have to code for the possibility of change, flexibility, adaptability, resilience to market trends. And so we, I shouldn't think we would code so tightly that that flexibility is limited.
So I think, I think what I'm hearing, I do want to make sure, we, I want to talk about drive-throughs, because that's the other issue we talked earlier about. From what I'm hearing is, you know, have a max that people can work with in that envelope. It doesn't mean that you have to build to that max. It also means that if you wanted to build more than that, you could do it on multiple stories, which we're already seeing in other, other environments, not just urban environments, suburban environments as well. But provide that flexibility within certain areas of, of town center. That's, I think that's what, to boil it down, I think that's what I heard from, from the commission.
I'm, I'm seeing that here in what you've produced so far.
I just-
So I think, yeah, I think the question I have remaining in my head is that we are allowing more flexibility in the commercial mixed-use district. There's still the desire for limitation in Main Street District. Is there a desire for a shift in the mixed-use sub-district, which is the orange? And would that only be in locations like on the edges? I, I'm trying to gauge this conversation in terms of how it applies. I think we've, we're three-quarters of the way there already, but I think we have that last little bit to go.
I think one of the things that I struggle with, Miranda, on that is, is that I think those two mixed-use districts right along Wilsonville Road, they, they just feel very different to me than the upper end of the mixed-use district, you know, on the north. And I almost, a lot of times, look at this and wonder, eh, should we be doing something different with that one? You know what I mean? Or maybe, like you said, the solution is, is that those two mixed-used ones, because I guess I envisioned something along Wilsonville Road. I, I still think having something like that will get people there, and then you walk within the area, you know what I mean? That's, that's one of the things that I'm thinking of, so.
That's definite, I mean, that's definitely a approach we could take if the, if, if that's what resonates with the commission. In a lot of other areas, like with the Main Street District, we actually have even, I think, tighter design guidelines right at the intersection by the park, because that, we all identified that that's a really critical, important place. And so we could also say, you know, within the mixed-use district along or adjacent to Wilsonville Road.
I was wondering if the, if adjacent to Wilsonville Road should actually be commercial, excuse me, mixed-use. I mean, I hate to, to change the, change the coloring of the map and the zoning, but maybe that's what we're talking about.
Except for that one, then, allows for a lot more building height. The commercial mixed-use does. And so by combining those two, then you're making potential for five-story, maybe even six-story if it's got residential.
It says, it says, it says higher buildings alongside I-5. I'm not proposing to change that.
So with the mixed-use district, it's a pretty open district. There are, there are some scale limitations, but it's, it's two to four stories. It allows most everything in there. But the drive-through, I think, is the question, primarily for the one adjacent to Wilsonville Road. And maybe that's a differentiation between the Wilsonville Road one and the one in the northeast corner, just from a visibility standpoint. But, yeah, I mean, that mixed-use zone's pretty open in terms of what it, what it permits.
But we don't want four-story buildings along Wilsonville Road.
Yeah, I think that's right. Okay.
Okay.
Can I just get the head nods on whether folks are in support of the adjacent to Wilsonville Road within the mixed-use?
Specifically relating to what?
The floor print of allowing greater than 30,000 up to 50,000 for an anchor. And we could include design, some of the designs, discussion that was had earlier.
With the notion that I think Commissioner Heberline had a great point, which is, is you can still have, you know, some other frontage kind of stuff.
I, I think that's, I would be okay with it if we've, we've got some limitations on what the frontage looks like.
Mm-hmm. We have frontage and block size, yeah, maximum, maximum block size, even outside of Main Street, right?
That's correct.
Correct.
So, yeah.
Okay.
Are we making a mess of Wilsonville Road with traffic?
Mess of all of it.
Because of all of this, because you aren't going to have driveways, I assume, onto Wilsonville Road from these businesses, the accesses from the four, you know, the roads that we have to the back, right?
That's, that's correct. So everything, everything would be off of-
So this is really a front, so to speak. Design becomes very critical.
Yeah, and I think from, if, from the Wilsonville Road frontage, I think we'd want to just take a look to make sure that the design standards, you know, you're not having a lot of parking fronting Wilsonville Road, that it's still, and I, I believe that's how we had structured that, particularly at the corners of those, those streets. But that were, you know, that it's an attractive place to come into for, for town center. So I think we might take a look at that, review that for the next round.
The idea of having a wall of glass along Wilsonville Road with these fake kind of storefront things, so as you're driving, it looks like a bunch of stores, but it's really one, you know, whatever, 50,000-square-foot building. Yeah, I think it needs to have texture, it needs to have space that invites and has opening and then comes back out. The design gets pretty important and tricky, so that it's not just a wall.
Well, I was in Old Town just before this meeting and kind of looking at how that's matured over time with the Fred Meyer, and that's exactly what's happened. There are some businesses that are using that entrance off of Boones, is that right? It goes down. Some of them use that, but others have put brown paper, you know, and there, too. So it's, you know, the, that's, that's a great example of intent versus implementation.
Yep.
And so Wilsonville Road, I think, is definitely susceptible to that, because there isn't going to be on-street parking to activate that. I think that's one of the challenges with the Old Town development, is that there isn't a reason for somebody to be, be back there. There's a reason for them to be on the other side, because that's where parking is. And so it's something we'd want to look at for Wilsonville, Wilsonville Road as well. The benefit is, we have streets that are a little more closely spaced on Wilsonville Road with the proposal, so that might be a little easier to, to mitigate. But certainly, it's certainly an issue, and it's not, it happens every place, that parking is located where there's not solid access from the street.
And also, you're dealing with the problem of the traffic is, is not incentivizing walking along and, you know, sitting on, on Wilsonville Road or any of that stuff. So it's going to be pretty stark space, potentially.
I don't see Wilsonville Road as, I see the, the perpendicular streets as really where the activity happens. Wilsonville Road's a busy place now, it's going to stay busy. There's not a reason to be there. Even if there were really nice buildings, you'd probably want, just from an environment standpoint, to be on Park, you know, or Town Center Loop West. So we'll put some thought into that and, and come back to you with a proposal.
So we talked about that on I-5, that you're going to have windows into town center as you're driving at 70 miles an hour. Do this as you're going. But Wilsonville Road really has the same kind of an issue. You, you want to have these vistas that invite people into town center as they're driving on Wilsonville Road, much slower speed, so it's easier, as opposed to a wall.
So we have just a few more minutes. We, this current slide, we did make just a few changes based on some of the comments, but I wanted to go to, let's see, this comment, since we've been talking a lot about this. Just to talk about, you know, drive-through facilities, there's a number of them in, in Town Center Loop. We do provide design guidelines within the current, the code we proposed for drive-through facilities. As it's written in the code now, those could continue, you know, as a part of, as part of Town Center, primarily on Wilsonville Road and Town Center Loop. But I think the question to the planning commission is, are there specific areas where that would be, drive-throughs would be permitted, provided, I think, there's some design guidelines that help with the pedestrian qualities? I think I heard clearly, not on Main Street.
On the periphery.
But on the, on the, on the periphery. And likely, they'd be Town Center Loop West where there's visibility. That's kind of how it would, they'd go. I don't know if I got agreement, I heard agreement from, from folks. Now, remember, Town Center Loop West will change from its traffic pattern, so if Wilsonville Road changes, there won't be a left turn permitted on Town Center Loop West. But, you know, you still could access it coming from the west, coming from the east, excuse me.
So what is the drive-through for? The traffic on I-5 is going to be attracted to drive-throughs? Is that what you guys were saying?
They're going to the human bean.
Because if that's the case, again, I worry about the mess we're going to create, because if everybody's getting off I-5 to go all the way to East Loop to go through the drive-through and all the way back, are you going to do that, really? Or are you just going to go to the next exit and go to human bean? If you want coffee? That's the question. I'm fine with drive-throughs, but I just, I'm asking, what are, what are we trying to accommodate by having drive-throughs?
I, it's, it goes to me to that, to that destination thing again. I'm, the right restaurant, for instance, if you put a Chick-fil-A on that corner, you're going to drive people there. And guess what's going to happen? They're going to park there, and they're going to frequent some of the other businesses, in my mind. So, I mean, I think the right, the right, the right restaurant, for instance, can really pull that off. And like I said, it may sound silly, but, you know, something like a Dutch Brothers, it's a small footprint. But it makes for a destination where you're going to come and do other things in that area as well. I mean, there, if you were to ask my daughter, does she want to go shop at the place over here, the shop at the place that has the Dutch on the corner? I, I know the answer to that question. So it's, those, those things may seem silly, but it's, it creates destination and gets people to arrive.
And I guess my question would be, and I don't frequent coffee shops, so I don't know.
Neither, I don't drink it.
But all I see when I see drive-throughs is a pile of cars. And those pile of cars, in my view, don't seem like they're going to a destination other than that drive-through. They're on their way somewhere, they're on their way back from somewhere. Are they really on their way to Park Place and stopping at a drive-through to go pick up a coffee before they start walking around?
We want them to stop in Park Place and have coffee at the coffee shop.
No, I, I think you're right about that, is to some degree, yes and no. But, for instance, Chick-fil-A, that place is always busy on the inside. And you know what? It drives people to Tannasborn. It just does. You know, it's the same thing with, like I said, with, with like a Dutch Brothers. You drive through and then you go park and, and you go do your walking. Yeah, people do that. They really do. If you, if you create that opportunity for that to be a part of the destination and the reason I'm going there, you can drive people to the rest of it as well.
And Dutch Brothers does not have a store that doesn't have drive-throughs?
Dutch Brothers does not have a store that does not have a drive-through.
Interesting.
They have one?
Oh, really?
Hmm?
Oh, wow.
I tried to walk up to a Dutch Brothers once.
Right, you're scarcely, you can't walk up?
Boise has a-
No, they walk up, some of them will walk up.
Tried to walk up to a Dutch Brothers and then he got run over. Yeah, I mean, that, that's, that's-
No, but there's plenty of them with walk-up windows, though, too.
Yeah, yeah, have you tried using it? It's dangerous. Just, just, so, we, anyway, I, I, overall, I'm, I'm not averse to allowing drive-throughs on the periphery, but in general, I think we need to, we, I don't, I don't see it contributing to what we're, what we're trying to, what we're trying to build here. It's not, it's, it's, it's the opposite of a walkable neighborhood. It's by definition, you drive through.
Yeah, I, I quite agree. I think that it's antithetical to the whole notion of walkability and tarrying, which, being there. I mean, that, that is one of the senses that we want driving, this, at least the Park Place, part of, of our development. It's a place, and it's a place to tarry, it's a place to be, a place to meet people and so forth. Well, even if you have no intention and actually don't follow through on buying anything, it's just, it's a place to be. And that, we have to have a core for placemaking and identity in town center development that is just that. That has nothing to do with driving, it has nothing to do, driving is a necessary part of getting there, of being there, but it isn't anything you want to do with driving while you are there. So I think that drive-throughs really don't have anything to do with this, except for people who aren't having anything to do with Town Center, Park Place, with, with, what's going on in Park Center, they're, I mean, in Town Center, they're going past Town Center, not likely drawn into there from I-5. Human Bean does some of that, I think, but this, this has got to be a destination which is about the quality of the place. I'm really convinced about that. I've been convinced about it since Consultant Gibson, his presentation, very early on in the process. I still remember this vividly, the pictures that he showed us. That's what I have had in my mind for, for Park Place right along.
That, but that's Park Place, we're talking about the periphery, though, too.
But Park Place I see as the real heart and soul of this. And if, if this, if, if what we're looking for here really is going to work and be a distinctive part of Wilsonville, making, making Wilsonville special among, in this area, it's got to be defined by some area within Town Center. And I think that that's Park Place, that has the best potential, potential for it. And that's got to be walkable and tarrying.
But we're talking about putting it on the peripheries, not on Park Place. We are talking about prohibiting it.
You mean drive-throughs.
Yeah, no drive-throughs in Main Street.
Oh, absolutely.
We're talking about, can you have drive-through on the mixed-use, say, the corners?
Sure, absolutely. And it's possible that somebody might stop there on the way in or on the way out of doing[1765.96] something else, tarrying, if you will, in Town Center. They might tarry in Town Center and then grab a coffee on the way out, but it would be far better, in my mind, if they had a place to buy the coffee in Park Place Town Center.
And with CT outside.
Yeah, but is that economically feasible for them if they can't get that morning crowd that's driving through on their way to go to work?
I doubt that they will be tarrying in Town Center at all.
Okay, we have a dilemma then. I mean, I, I don't know how to make that coffee shop viable if you can't serve that crowd that needs to, that's stopping by on their way to the freeway.
Well, I mean, Wilsonville is a pretty large and diverse place. We do have other, we do have the Alexon interchange. Heaven forbid, we, we have what's going on altogether on the west side, we have access, a good access road. We have Boone's Ferry Road on the, on the west side. We have the access road on the west side that's not very well-developed at all, except for those large businesses that are there with berm separating them from the access road. But Wilsonville, and then we have, of course, Viebois, which is a neighborhood with its own possibilities and that are developing, and they should include some more commercial developments and some tarrying places. This isn't the only thing. Wilsonville is not just Town Center, it's never going to be, it shouldn't be. This should be a jewel in Wilsonville, but it's not the only area for development.
Chair, I'm, I'm not clear. Are you saying you don't agree with drive-throughs in the mixed-use area?
Commissioner Mellon. Commissioner Mellon?
I, I would say let the market...
Okay, oh, thank you.
I would say let the market affect that.
Okay, so you're not arguing against that?
But I do think that we should restrict it in the interior of Town Center.
Okay. I just wanted to be clear that, yeah, that, you're just arguing against it on the...
It doesn't seem to me to be a real goal of develop, of our planning to provide for it.
So drive-through prohibited in the Main Street District, but permissible in the mixed-use?
I would say absolutely.
Agreed.
Agreed.
That's what we've been talking about.
That's what I, that's where I thought we were going.
I'm sorry to, sorry to belabor this. I, I thought we were gravitating towards drive-throughs permissible on the exterior of the mixed-use, as in along Town Center Loop, West, East, and Wilsonville Road. But I'm not sure, actually, that we should allow drive-throughs on Wilsonville Road itself because of traffic concerns, but certainly Town Center Loop.
They just won't have access.
They wouldn't have access.
They wouldn't have access.
Right.
So it's actually, it's a similar development pattern than what is, what's there today, Starbucks and the others, they, they come off of Town Center Loop, Loop West. Okay, so, so from a direction standpoint, what I'm hearing is, drive-throughs with design requirements to reduce or improve some of the pedestrian qualities around that would be permitted within the mixed-use area along Town Center Loop West. Is that, is that what I'm...
Town Center Loop East and West?
East and West.
So the mixed, now, mixed-use is only, let's see...
There is a portion that hits, there is a portion that hits Loop East. But we definitely had heard, so the reason this initially, and I don't want to lengthen the conversation because I like where you're headed, but I just want to be clear that the reason why we initially had prohibited drive-throughs was because of a lot of what we had heard from the public in terms of safety concerns, particularly with our existing drive-through facilities. The language that we have allowing existing facilities to be continued and was really to get at this issue that Commissioner Postma kind of alluded to earlier, which is that you create a value the minute you prohibit, and that in other town centers, other centers within the region, that allowing them to redevelop and reincorporate that drive-through makes that property more valuable and more likely to be redeveloped as long as the design standards are met, as opposed to prohibiting any altogether, because then, when it redevelops, they can't continue the drive-through. So that was the intent on the language and the reason we had a lot, we had the prohibition initially was because of what we heard through the public engagement process. And so I do want to acknowledge particularly near the neighborhood mixed-use area in the yellow, that that was definitely an area that we heard through the public outreach pretty unanimously concern around drive-throughs there. So I, I, because the mixed-use district does come up pretty directly with the neighborhood mixed-use, I just wanted to make sure I reiterated that point because that was a lengthy conversation we had with the public. So we can, I think we can take your input and try to fine-tune where else we might allow, and we'll come back with a next stab at it at your next meeting.
If I remember, the whole idea of not having drive-throughs was because that's car-dependent, which is what the chair was, was mentioning. And initially, we said, nowhere here should you have car-dependent activities because it waters it down. Is it viable? Well, you know, Shorewood Downtown has the coffee shop that doesn't have a drive-through in downtown, but they also have coffee shops with drive-throughs close to 99 and places like that. So, I mean, Wilsonville similarly has those kinds of different areas of land use. But I'm sensitive to the fact this is going to be new development and not some old house that's being turned into a coffee shop, so it may not be viable for somebody to do that in this district. I would hope that we would have tarrying coffee shops because we're missing those in Wilsonville. But, fine, it is important, as you look, to make sure that we're not, the traffic is what worries me as well as the issue of safety. If we drive these, drive-throughs too deep on the east, on the west loop, I wonder how they're going to get in and out and so forth, but that's fine.
And I think the, you know, as Miranda brought up, the public is very clear about, you know, that transition from residential into Town Center, and so, you know, looking at where drive-throughs are located, you know, Town Center Loop West is, is kind of where they are now, potentially kind of keeping them there. If you're going to permit them, that would probably be the, of any space, the ideal location for them and for adjacent residents. But I think the question of, you know, access and other, other issues would certainly come up with that, so you don't get your drive-through row, which you sort of are starting to get to now with some of those, those uses, uses there.
Yeah, maybe limiting proximity or, you know, spacing of drive-throughs or something like that is another way to keep it from being that row of drive-throughs.
I'm keeping an eye on the clock. What do we need to address?
Those are the two major issues.
We have not even touched on traffic, really. We've not touched at all on parking.
Traffic, we, we talked about at the last, at the last Planning Commission meeting, so we had addressed that with the new system. It works. It actually works better than what's proposed in the Transportation System Plan. We can certainly provide that presentation again at a later date if you want that. In terms of parking, we, we revised the draft a bit, just to clarify a couple of questions that you had at the last meeting, but there was really only one comment within, within parking, and we, we addressed that in this last, in the last draft.
I bring, I regret bringing it up so late. I, I think, in, in looking through the whole, the plan as it exists, the draft as it exists, I am probably the least comfortable about parking. And the one point in the, the discussion in the plan that sticks hardest with me is the off-site parking. I don't know how that works, or how that would affect the viability of the plans for businesses. I don't know how it affects the viability of the plan for customers. It especially affects residential. That, that's what is, in fact, we haven't talked very much about the residential tonight, but the residential part of this seems to me, and has from time to time come up pretty prominently in our discussion, the residential part of it is a very important part of it, feet on the ground, providing viability to businesses. And I would like to see us talking a lot more about our residential planning in Town Center. And as a part of that, we've got to address parking for those residences. I have questions about the, the viability, for want of a better word, of off-premises parking at any distance from the, from the premises.
Is that for all uses or for residential in particular?
Residential.
Okay.
Not, not for commercial, so much as for residential.
Do we allow it for residential?
Yeah.
Okay.
So I, I don't have a clear sense of where this is going in the plan, or where this even, even is in the plan, or what kind of accommodations we're making for the residential parking in it, but I think it's got to be carefully considered.
The way that parking is currently written, if I remember correctly, is that for residential uses, one space per unit is required on the site of the development, that there would be, and you could certainly provide as much parking on the site as you, as you wanted per the standards. But if you wanted to provide additional overflow parking, then that could be located off-site. And your current code allows parking within 500 feet of a development, so you already have that, that within your code to permit that. I think, though, one thing that we, we opened it up a little bit more to include the Town Center boundary, just knowing that there is a lot of unused existing parking in there that, if you're looking at catalyzed development, providing every opportunity to, one, not overbuild your supply on a single site, but then also provide that opportunity for a person who's coming in and taking the biggest risks, to be honest, if your first project, to allow some flexibility in how you, you deal with that parking while not undersupplying it, so using that, that existing parking adjacent to...
And then it also allows flexibility later so that if, when development occurs and maybe there's a possibility to partner to get some type of parking facility, like a garage, that residential, or any use that's adjacent to that garage could potentially utilize a portion of those garage spaces and pay into that. And so that would be another opportunity for a share of or overflow parking that's in addition to the existing requirements. So it, it allows kind of the flexibility now where we have adequate parking, but also sets up the ability to use that same type of standard to take advantage of other types of parking when it becomes more feasible in the Town Center. So, I mean, there's the element of parking that's in front of you right now, which is related to the code, and if you have further concerns, we're happy to take those. In terms of, you'll see the next steps up here on your slide, and one of those is a complete draft plan. So we are busy working on putting together the full plan, which basically puts together all the pieces that have been in front of you. It's a lot of pieces, but that will be in sort of a full plan document, and will include more information and implementation around parking. I mean, I think one thing we talked about earlier tonight is that we have an approach for parking that works now based on where we're at with the Town Center now and some of the things that we can do at this point in time. We will, parking is something that, as the area transitions, how we handle parking will shift, and what parking is needed will shift based on how the Town Center transitions in development over time. And that's very hard to predict without knowing the first developments that will come in and what it will look like. And so one of the recommendations from this plan is to do a parking management plan and to be able to do additional, more detailed analysis and work as the Town Center evolves and as it moves forward for us to be able to implement new approaches that are ripe at that point in time. So I think that's an important component that you'll see and further described in the full draft plan that will be in front of you in January.
Okay.
So hopefully, that will help. Other questions?
Having a complete draft plan for the January work session sounds like a lot of work, but if we can, at all possible, get that earlier than normal to be able to have time to review that in its entirety, that would be helpful.
We will see what we can do.
New Year's Eve. Fine reading.
There are holidays in there, but what we might be able to do is, as we have, because there are many pieces, like the appendices, many of the appendices are already done, these are work products you've seen before, so maybe even just being able to put stuff up, you can refresh your memory on the pieces that we already have, and we will get that up as soon as we can. But with the holiday, I'm not sure what we can promise.
Yeah, absolutely. Completely understand, so I just, you know, anything we can get earlier to be able to make sure we do a thorough review would be great.
Right, thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Anything else? Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate it.
Are there any concerns or questions to convey to council?
Commissioner, excuse me, Commissioner Hurley had a couple of questions about the most recent council meeting that I'm happy to address. The topic of 5G wireless came up at the last council work session. 5G, the latest technology. There are new Federal Communication Commission regulations that apply to all municipalities, counties and cities across the United States. They are going into effect in the middle of January, and so we are immediately under the gun to respond to these new FCC regulations. If you recall, two years ago, we completely overhauled the cell tower ordinance to address the new, the new, then at the time, the new regulations that went into place. These regulations actually address a number of things, but probably the most challenging for cities are the changes to the shot clock, what they call the shot clock, the timeframes by which we must issue an approval for 5G requests. And the amount that the city can actually collect for utilization of the public's right-of-way is being brought down to a very low level as far as what the cities are allowed to, to collect. And we are, we are in the business of regulating aesthetics, and we have concerns with four primary carriers, all that have their own technology, all that are independent, working on their own to install these new 5G networks, which I believe we all want to see rolled out. However, they're coming into the neighborhoods, they're coming right in front of houses, they're coming, they're coming right in front of houses and right next to where we live, and they have some aesthetic challenges in a lot of the designs, they don't look very good. You could have a corner with four different carriers on four different poles, all at the same intersection, all with large ground-mounted utility boxes with wires and cables and antenna arrays on existing light poles that, as an underground city, Wilsonville being an underground city, we underground all of our utilities, we have significant aesthetic concerns about what this does to the, the landscape. And so we're looking at, working very expeditiously on trying to get aesthetic standards in place, coming up with fee schedules that, that can helpfully generate enough, enough cost recovery for utilization of the public's right-of-way, as well as trying to create new processes that we don't currently have on our application forms to address even shorter timeframes and shot clocks. I mean, these are down to 60 days from the time that they drop these packages of deployments on our desk, and if we don't do X, Y, and Z at exactly the right moment, these become de facto approved, and then they, they roll out. So Ms. Gail Hindman has been on this, she's been to some training, I haven't been to some, Rand has been to some, but we're all trying to learn as quickly as we can. We have a gentleman, Jonathan Kramer, out of Los Angeles, who's helped us before. He's, he's uniquely qualified, he's a lawyer and an electrical engineer and a whole bunch of other stuff, and so, you know, he, he's on our team, he's going to help me come up with some standards. We're going to modify the public work standards to try to underground as much of this as we can, try to create as clean and simple and aesthetically pleasing designs as we can, and then brace for the blowback that will be from all these companies who disagree with what it is we're trying to do, essentially, in a nutshell.
I just want to clarify one thing. Chris hit that pretty much nail on the head, but it's not necessarily deemed approved if we don't meet our shot clock, but the ramification is actually worse. It is used as basically presumptive evidence that the city is trying to prohibit these from coming into our city, which subjects us to a lot of penalties if we're sued. So it's a problem, and so we are working diligently to make sure that we are compliant before January 14th.
So there may be, there may be subsequent amendments that need to come. We, we don't have time to run a normal process. In fact, we're looking at the council running perhaps even an emergency ordinance to try to get these modifications in place by January 14th, because we haven't written anything, and we got to get this thing done. We don't have time for two readings of an ordinance and a 30-day enactment, because applications can come in the door in the gap between the time this becomes effective and when we're doing things. So we, we need to be very tight on the timelines, and then we'll get the minimum in place, and then I suspect we might have a longer process where we can engage in a much more robust conference. conversation. So there's maybe a couple of approaches, a couple of patches that we're going to try to take to addressing these brand-new regulations.
When was this promulgated?
Over the summer, wasn't it?
Yeah, so it was, the rules were voted on on September 26th, 25th or 26th, and then they went into effect in October. So we--
Unreasonable.
Yeah, well, so it's not a matter of we've just been sitting around. We've known about this since they published them, and, yeah, so we don't, and we really don't have a lot of guidance, so Jonathan's very valuable to us and is going to provide a lot of insight for us, so.
And this is coming out of, this is the feds, right?
Yes.
Yes, the FCC. And there are lawsuits that have already been filed.
League of Cities, major metropolitan cities all across the United States have filed litigation. The lawyers are thinking it won't be stayed so that it's going to go into effect in middle of January, and then the litigation will go on, and whatever happens, happens. But the administration is desirous of seeing these things in place very quickly, and there's a lot of momentum behind this effort, so. The other issue, sorry to have to continue, Aurora Airport. The council is scheduled a public hearing on November 27th that the community is invited to, to speak to the Aurora Airport expansion proposal. And in a nutshell, you recall, you know, it was about 10 years ago, they did a master plan. There was some gerrymandering of the boundary as far as who the affected parties were, the affected agencies. Clackamas County, Wilsonville were excluded from that process, from an intergovernmental agreement, and were not afforded an adequate opportunity to participate in some of those processes. And that was 10 years ago when that plan went into effect. There's now a $37 million grant to the federal government for a runway expansion of 1,000 feet. The council's concerned about that. Been on the record for well over a decade with our concerns about the issue there. There's plenty of written material. If you care to see it, we can have that provided to you. But the public hearing is merely a venue for different people to be heard so that that information can then be communicated to the emergency board, who's making the decision on this 37 or $34 million grant request that is in front of them for decision-making. And so there's a lot of things happening with Oregon Solutions, doing an assessment with all the various parties. They're talking to all the municipalities, talking to aviation, talking to special interests, collecting a ton of information. Council wanted to be sure that the community at large had an opportunity to be heard on these issues. So that's what the hearing is about. It's an opportunity to just come and say what you think about it. Everybody's being invited, you know, federal aviation, state aviation, you know, business interests, all kinds of, everybody under the sun is being invited. Whether they choose to come and participate in this is, remains to be seen. So we will see, but I wanted to make sure that the commission knew that this was all going down. If you're interested in that, we expect a couple hundred people here on the 27th to offer their points of view.
Where's that taking place?
It'll be here.
We're not putting 200 people in this--
Well, we'll have to stage them. We would have to stage them. So, you know, we'd keep people out and upstairs, or we're still trying to work out if it materializes.
Could we use community college facilities?
I don't know that they have more space than actually we do, but at this point, we're looking at holding it here because this is where the audio visuals are. We want to videotape it. We want to have everything in place. So if you have more questions about that, Mark Ottenhead is the city's contact on that. He's got all the city's positions on that. Happy to, again, give that all to you as part of communication on what the council has articulated as their concerns. Lastly, I have bad news. Nancy has announced her retirement at the end of November, and she'll be moving on and just enjoying herself. It's been amazing working with such a tremendous, talented, you know, talented and energetic civil engineer who's just completely enlightened and gets it and appreciates planning, and we're going to miss her so much. So she's moving on to a lot of good things, and it's been a wonderful ride for her. So please feel free to reach out to Nancy between now and the end of the month and wish her well.
Will there be a celebratory occasion?
They're, they're looking at, I'm not sure what's going on with, I know they've got a party that they're planning, so let me get the details on that. I think they're looking at trying to get a little bit larger venue because they expected a lot of interest. So I will be able to send that out to the commission once the details are finalized, which I believe they may already be. I just don't happen to have them. So let me make a note and be sure to get that out to everybody.
So, Chris, one comment on the Aurora Airport. Goodness, as it stands right now, and I just checked the site again, so the email that went out to, I'm not sure exactly who at the city, but I got it. I went and looked at the website. There's no actual information on the city website that has information about, here's the language of the proposal, here's any information regarding traffic, whether it's vehicular, air traffic. There's nothing on there. So I'm not sure exactly how the city, or the city expects residents to be informed about what the position is and why the city is taking its position when there's no background information.
Got it.
Is it that we have no real standing in the process? The city doesn't have any real standing in the process?
Let's just say there hasn't been a venue for people to be heard, I think, is probably--
But we're asserting our--
Essentially, that's what's being done. Yes.
And my concern is the city has made its opinion known, and it's not giving the public the information of which to either validate or dispute that position. And so I'd like the information.
Hmm. Will there be some information that's shared prior to this public event?
I know that there's been a lot of written material that have been submitted to all these various groups and organizations, and at that, you know, essentially that is the city's position, so--
I personally get stuff from friends of French Prairie.
Sure, so that's another way that some of this information is being distributed. I'll be sure to talk to Mark about the website, you know, make sure that at least the position papers are being posted up for public consumption and--
Yeah, I emailed him and haven't, he said he was going to post them. I think it was late last week, and it's still not up, so.
I think the mayor's, there was a mayor's letter, right, that was pretty informative with all the attachments and stuff, that would be a part of it. Then there was something previously, some time ago, from the county, maybe it was a joint letter from the county and the city.
Yes.
I seem to remember.
But I assume then that there would be counter-information available then, too, because it's, you know, if it's just--
Is there, is there any other information available?
Sure, sure. Economic reports that happened years ago and the like, and so there's plenty of other position papers available, so.
Okay. Love to see that.
All right.
Not on the council agenda, but I note with some great pleasure that an area in our Frog Pond development has been chosen for the Builders Association Northwest Natural City, a street of dreams. That's a tremendous kickstart to our development.
Yes, a lot of fast-moving pieces on that. We met with the development team today. Right now, there's only four actual homes that have been secured. They're hopeful to get as many as eight out of the show. It's basically July 25th through the entire month of August. You know, pretty exciting for the home-building industry. The Home Builders Association actually operates the show, so it's operated by the member organization. So at this point, there are three builders in the show and four homes that we're sure of, but, you know, we have to get paving on the ground in the middle of winter. We have to get plaits signed in record times and provide, you know, at least seven months for the construction of these incredible homes, so.
DRB is going to be very busy.
Well, DRB's role is done because they've reviewed the subdivision, so now everything is at the staff level as far as building permit issuance. Today, our meeting was very exciting because we're trying to establish digital submittals and rapid turnaround times in ways that we really haven't tried to do before, and this one warrants it more than anything we've seen in a very long time. Our building official has been instrumental in really trying to get out of the box, and we're blocking out time weeks in advance so we can do these reviews and provide feedback and just really communicating at a high level. So it's exciting to be on the cutting edge of the project.
It's very nice for the, for the development. It really, it gets it off the ground.
So is the lot sizes are what was already been approved? And they're not, they're not talking about building larger lots?
No, it was the very first phase of the Stafford Meadows, so the lots are, choice of lots along Beckman and the first block in along Willow Creek Drive. So there's about 25 lots that they said could be part of the street of dreams, and a builder can come and choose any one of those 25. So they're picking and choosing where they want to be and what kind of homes they want to develop in there. So very fluid, very fast-paced, and lots going on around that. So hopefully we hit those deadlines.
And seeding development of the whole area. That's wonderful.
Yeah.
Anything else? Let's conclude our business for tonight. Then I will declare adjourned.